To our November 9th City Council meeting, in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk president here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments, and every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. And we thank you for participating in your city government, and we also ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. And could we all please stand for the invocation? And please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome Pastor Russell Cheatham from Heart Cry Chapel. Good to have you here, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you, to worship you tonight, and to thank you, Lord, for the privilege of living in a country, in a city, that prioritizes prayer and speaking to you and seeking you first at the beginning of these meetings. And, Lord, we seek you tonight. We thank you for your presence. Thank you, Lord, for these city council members. Pray, Holy Spirit of God, you would equip them and fill them with your Spirit and give them wisdom and guidance and decisions that are made. Thank you, Lord, for this city and all the people in the city. And we just pray, Lord, as you, just pray every blessing upon them. Help this city council, Lord, to be a help, to promote your goodwill, Lord, and we give you thanks. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. And they all said, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Cheatham. Please remain standing. Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
I'd like to ask our city manager if we have any agenda updates you need to share with us at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull public hearing number 13 off of the agenda, and I'd like to request that we continue public hearing number 14 to January 11th, 2024.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation for Employee of the Month for September by Chief
Good evening. My name is Jason Miller, Fire Chief for St. Cloud Fire Rescue. This evening, we're recognizing firefighter paramedic J.C. S. Golden. So to start off with, firefighter Golden showed amazing customer care. He showed empathy, sympathy, and really exemplified what a firefighter is worth to both the city, the citizens, and family members. On September 25th, J.C. was the lead paramedic on a call where a pediatric child was injured. He made the decision to fly the small child by helicopter to Orlando for proper treatment and care. When the helicopter landed, the policy was stated that the mother, who was wearing sandals, was not allowed to accompany the child. Without hesitation, without thinking, J.C. literally took boots off, his shoes off his feet, and handed them to the mother so that she could fly on the helicopter and accompany her young child. We did, after all, get those back a little bit later. But without hesitation, he did this. This obviously was a great impact to the mother because she was able to accompany her child, and I'm happy to report that the child is well taken care of up in Orlando and is doing great today. So for September, we recognize J.C. Golden as Employee of the Month, and we thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation for Employee of the Month for October by Kevin Felbinger. You have your speech already? I'll get this out while you do it.
Good evening. I'd like to be the first person to congratulate October 2023 Employee of the Month, David Castor. On September 26th, David was on his way to City Hall and observed a traffic accident where a small car appeared to have hit an SUV. David quickly assessed the site and realized that there were no police officers present, and the accident appeared to be causing a traffic hazard. He immediately pulled a safe distance behind the accident scene and turned on his truck's flashers. He then got out of his truck and talked with the people involved in the accidents while waiting for the first responders to arrive on site. Approximately five minutes later, the St. Cloud Police Department arrived on site and took control of the scene. Without Mr. Castor's quick actions, additional vehicles and people may have become involved in the accident scene. Thank you for your quick thinking and compassion shown to our citizens.
I really do appreciate that. I'm used to being on the other side of this award, so it really, really means a lot. You know, I deserve this to the men and women in my division that I do work for each and every day, and without them, I couldn't do it, plus, you know, the men and women of the entire city that I work with as well. So thank you all very much.
At this time, we have a presentation by St. Cloud BMX.
I'm assuming this is my remote. Thank you all for having us this evening. I just wanted to give you an overview of St. Cloud BMX. A lot of you have been out to the site.
Could you state your name and address?
Absolutely. I apologize. Cory Carpenter, St. Cloud BMX, 2401 Peg Horn Way, St. Cloud. Our mission at St. Cloud BMX is to positively impact our community through BMX racing and to build a safe and family-friendly environment for our citizens to come to. We are a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. We're 100% volunteer-run. We have absolutely no paid employees at our facility. We're made up of city and community residents, and we do a lot of community outreach and community events. We do STEM educational facilities in conjunction with the school district. You may not know it, but building a bike is actually a very good STEM activity, so when we bring these things to the students, they actually get to learn the experience and get to come out and ride a bike, so it's a lot of fun. We do the Halloween Community Trunk or Treat, Easter egg hunts. We also offer scholarship and fundraising races, and we offer bikes, helmets, and other equipment at no charge to residents to come out and try the sport and use the facility. And we give kids a positive outlet for their energy and time. We also offer volunteer hours for high school students, so if you know any that are looking for volunteer hours, we're always looking for volunteers, so please send them on by. We offer summer and holiday camps, public trainings and clinics, and we have open track time for our local community. BMX racing ranks number one among the fastest-growing sports on a three-year participation rate, and this is a study done by the sports and fitness industry in 2022, which put BMX racing at the top of the three-year annual growth rate. Locally, we have 160 open-city riders, which means riders that are not part of our parent company, which is USA BMX, but specific to St. Cloud BMX, that come out and ride, with 171 additional USA BMX memberships registered to the track, and 107 of them being local with Kissimmee or St. Cloud addresses. And on a weekly basis, we serve over 150 local participants at the facility. And if you think about that, each rider brings one to three additional people to our events, and those people then eat, shop, and play within the community. The economic impact of BMX racing has grown throughout the years and is really at the highest it's ever been. This is from DeSoto County, Texas, from their Tourists and Development Board, but DeSoto County is very comparable to St. Cloud in both size and population, so it was a very good example. Their nationals, however, are the size of our state races. The state of Florida has the highest BMX participation rate in the country, and if you take our three-day events, whatever they may be, whether they're state races, nationals, or regional, we average about anywhere from 800 to 1,000 participants at a time, which brings about 9,000 people over the course of that time to the track, with an estimated economic impact to the local economy of over $1.1 million per event. There are 16 tracks throughout the state of Florida. Each one will have a three-day event over the course of a two-year period, so we switch off eight and eight every other year. Additionally, St. Cloud BMX keeps making improvements, and we've gotten a lot of other events over the last few years. We hosted a regional event in 2023. We also hosted a national and state championship in 2021, and were slated for the state championship again in 2024. We're trying to elevate our track to the next level to be a national competitor, so what we're looking to do is have some improved facilities out at the track. We're looking for full bathrooms, commercial-grade concessions, and updated office and bike equipment storage, and that's really important because the more bikes we can provide to the local people, the more people that can ride. And we're also looking for a publicly accessible pump track, which I'll go into a little more in just a minute, and then covered spectator viewing areas. It's Florida, which just helps. And we're looking to increase our partnerships in outreach and community events, and as you can see here, we have a lot of volunteers that are ready, willing, and able to help with any of these things. So our goal over the next few years at St. Cloud BMX is to increase our economic impact of the facility to the local economy by increasing hosted events. This means we want to grow the facility, expand our collaborative partnerships, invest in facility improvements, and make the facility a nationally-recognized destination-based asset to St. Cloud. And then we are here for questions, and I did want to touch, because I had brought this up and had a quick question on it, what a pump track is. It's a smaller version of a BMX track, but it actually can be used for roller skates. It can be used for bikes. It can be used for skateboards. It can be used for scooters, and it kind of is a gateway into what BMX is, and they're a great draw for local communities around the state, and these were some examples from some of the local tracks around the state. And again, we're available for questions if you have any.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, and Mr. Councilman Gilbert would like to ask a question or make a comment.
Exciting stuff. Wonderful, wonderful things you do for the children. And I know about DeSoto County in Texas and how prominent they are. The taxpayers from the city of St. Cloud supported this effort, and they'll continue to support this effort. Let's look at how we partner up with different entities to make it a national BMX place, not a city or state. And also locally, it's a two-pronged thing. Let's look at bringing our children and introducing it to them. And when you said a function for bikes, there's a lot of people that do and fix bikes and do things like that. So I think this is a great thing. I just like to roll it, and I say that because bikes, but my grandkids go, and I truly believe this could be a national park, and when I look at the construction of it. So we're here. We supported it as a council. We'd like it to become a community availability, because I think children need more things to do than stay on their phones. But I also think it's a national track that is being built for you right now. So as a council member, one of five, I truly believe my folks would say, how do we bring this to the next level? Because we have a first track, BMX, being built, correct?
We, this track is built. We've been here, and we are actually going to be doing some renovations coming up that we've worked really hard to put aside the funds to do so, and we're looking for collaboration efforts on the part of the city, other organizations, other partners, to try to grow us into something even better.
And I see it, and so I would like to thank you for that, but I know what we need to bring internationally for these. I think you have a state tournament coming up in 2024.
Mm-hmm.
I think we'd like to do that with the community of St. Cloud, so thank you for all you do. It's awesome. I'm not getting on a bike because I'm already tore up, but there's some opportunities there for our youth to do the right thing and be a part of it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Urban.
Yes, I had the opportunity back when I was first elected to this position to go out and visit the BMX track, and it's very impressive that the impact they have on our community and especially in these state and national tournaments, the out-of-town people who get to visit our city and visit the businesses and restaurants here in our city. It's very impressive. I know one of the things we discussed when I was out there was the need for some permanent restroom facilities, and I hope soon that we can work towards that goal. I know we weren't able to get it in the budget this year, but I would love to collaborate and work with them to be able to do that for the kids out there in the community and the visitors to St. Cloud. So thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
And thank you so much, and I believe you have some BMX fans here or supporters.
We do.
Good to have you guys here. We appreciate all that you're doing to impact the lives of young people. I wish I was young enough to go try that. Last time I tried something without a seatbelt, I had to have surgery on my shoulder. So I will go out and observe. Thank you guys so much. With that, the next item on our agenda is our Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical there after the person addresses the council. When you go forward, we ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I have one request from John Jones. John, if you'll come forward.
Good evening. So John Jones, 900 Minnesota, St. Cloud. I'm a member of the executive board for our Level 4153. I'm here on behalf of one of our members to discuss recent grievances we filed, the results, and maybe see if city council can assist with a solution before it goes further. Essentially, what had happened, we had a firefighter who was injured. When we get placed on light duty, they convert our pay. We are normally on a 56-hour schedule. They convert us to a 40-hour schedule. Our hourly rate goes up. When he was cleared to come back to duty, he came back to duty, and somewhere along the way, somebody in payroll, fire admin, I'm unsure still where the mistake occurred, but the pay was not decreased. He was overpaid $17,000 over the course of roughly a year and a half. Now, we went through the grievance process, and as expected, the city followed the policy, which states that it will be paid back as it was given. This firefighter did not know he was getting overpaid that much, and some people have said, well, how did he not know? Well, how did the city not know? Is my question. $18,000 was missing, and it was in his bank account, and he didn't know. The city didn't know. It wasn't his mistake, you know? We have no control over payroll. Although every two weeks, we have to authorize our pay, we have zero control. There's no process in place to stop this from happening, and what I'm asking is for council to consider adjusting this policy to limit the payment to a certain dollar amount. He knows he has to pay the money back. We all agree on that. He owes the money. I'm not asking for a reduction in the amount. I want, or I'm requesting council to consider limiting that amount. Right now, the amount that they're going to take out of his check is roughly $1,000 a month for a guy who makes less than 60 grand a year. So his take home for being a 10-year firefighter paramedic is going to be about 30 grand over the next year. To me, that's unacceptable as his representative, and I'm hoping it's not acceptable to the city. What I'm asking is maybe limit it to $300 a month. Like I said, he's got about 10 years on. He's not retiring. He's not leaving. He loves working here, but like I said, to him, it's a shock to just one day show up and get an email from the fire chief that says, hey, we overpaid you $18,000. You owe us money. It was a bit of a shock at the time, so I'm asking you to consider. I know my time's up, but please consider amending that policy or at least helping this employee out so he's not financially burdened. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manzares.
As Mr. Jones pointed out, the city's personnel rules is pretty clear on it. They're adopted by action of the council, and the city staff was following the rules identically as it set forth in there. So if you were going to grant any change to it, we'd have to change that part of the rule, the employee personnel policy that addresses this. So, and that's what he's asking you to do, so.
Ms. Miller, councilmember, city manager.
I just wanted to point out that per the union contract, we have an outlined procedure, and the next step, if the union wasn't satisfied with the outcome, would be to go forward to...
Well, and I think that's an option, but frankly...
And he was given another opportunity to reduce the monthly payments.
Okay.
Just, you know, I understand that there was a grievance filed. However, the staff has followed to the letter the established procedure related to these matters that's set forth in the personnel rules for the city. So if we hadn't followed that, then I could see why there would be a potential to address the grievance, but staff has followed it to the letter. Basically, the policy, the rule says, the way the rules and regulations are, is that the repayment period shall be consistent with the overpayment period. So he received his payment over a period of, I understand, about 18 months, so the repayment period under the rules would be 18 months, and that's how you get to the monthly amount.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gilbert.
Mr. Jones, understandably, you had mentioned that, you know, it was a clerical error by the city of St. Cloud. I will take that at a 50% value. I would take the other 50% as the employee recognizing, hey, I got a Christmas bonus. Well, every week, you don't get a Christmas bonus, so I understand that. And I also stand the cost of living increases, and in my private company, I have 47 agreements with union contracts all over the United States. Two things: nine-year tenure, you're not going anywhere, and if you're making 60 grand a year, you know, 1,200, 1,500s can put you in a bad position. So my thought on this as a business owner and a father and a person, can we come to some compromise? Listen, we're going to pay this amount back. The city, I didn't know this, but the city manager already said there was other options that she offered. Can we go to the table and look at a reasonable amount over a period of time with a contractual agreement? If he was to leave the city, those monies due would be due upon his departure. What that does is retains a great employee, is what you're telling me, at nine years. He got hurt, that's it, but I'm not going to put the onus on the city alone nor on the employee alone. I would like to see a compromise where we look at ourselves maybe as big brother, and I don't want to say that too much, and we want to take care of everybody, but we still need to know that we're compensated for mistakes made by both sides. So that would be my thing, is can we go to the table and look at what he can comparably pay back, sign an agreement? And I don't even know if this is legal.
As I said, Mr., the problem with that is that would be inconsistent with the current rule.
Okay.
The monthly amount that has currently been calculated is based on the rule, the employee regulations.
Right, and I understand rules and regulations. I get that, but I'm a human, so that's what I look at, but I agree with you, and I don't know if I have the power to change anything.
Well, you don't tonight. The council can obviously direct that that rule be changed if you want to do that.
I don't know. I just was looking at it, the human side versus the contractual side, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. John, I'm glad you're up here. So I can reiterate what I think you said was, he's not arguing to pay back the amount as just an extension of the time.
The union agrees. He agrees. He owes the money.
Right.
I'm not disputing that, and I'm not disputing the fact that if he left, yes, he would owe the balance, which is the way it is now. He would owe all of that, yes.
Yeah.
100%. I'm just asking to maybe...
Extend the time.
Extend the time, lower the payment a little bit.
Right.
Ease his burden is all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I'm with Councilmember Gilbert. I feel like, you know, if I had additional money in my paycheck, I would notice it, but I also don't understand the city. The city made a mistake, too. I did talk with the city manager about it, and I understand we now have processes in place that this won't ever happen again in the future because we are, fingers crossed, right? We have auditing procedures in place that would, you know, every three months, that they're looking at things, and hopefully that they would catch it, which is how this was caught. It's just our auditing processes weren't as rapid. So I personally would like to, I mean, I guess, to Dan's point, modify the policy to try to find a way. I mean, it'd be great if we could just do like a one-off, like, situation, but if we can't, I would personally like to see if we could make a modification and write the language in such a way case-by-case basis, the city manager's discretion, you know, that kind of stuff for the future, but I feel confident we're not going to have this moving forward, so, you know, we won't get in this predicament, but, you know, our firefighters do a wonderful job for the city, and they have a very hard job, and I'd hate to see us put somebody in a bad situation financially or even make them want to leave because, you know, they don't have enough salary, so that's my personal opinion.
Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I would concur with Councilmember Gilbert and Matheny. I would like to see us come to an agreement here, but, and my other question was going to be, how can we avoid this happening in the future, but I think Councilmember Matheny just mentioned that, so that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Fletcher.
The only thing I wanted to say is I just echo the comments from the rest of the council, so I fully support everything that's already been said.
Thank you. Mr. Manzares, can we authorize or do something now that would give our city manager the authority to make an exception or...
I don't think you can tonight.
Or got to come back with a policy?
We're going to have, we'd have to look at the language that's in the personnel rules and bring that back for you to be, for a change to basically address that. The question is, we have been worked, this has been ongoing for several months now, maybe...
A month or two.
Month or two. So are, do you want to defer the repayment piece until you bring it back, or do you want to, you could move in accordance with the current policy with the idea that it's going to, possibly going to change shortly as soon as we can work it through from a procedure perspective?
I'm defer. I don't know how the other ones feel.
So explain to me exactly what you just said.
Well, what we would do is we'd work on the change to the policy that might provide some, probably, frankly, along the lines that Councilwoman Matheny just suggested, but bring it back, and then at that point, whatever the arrangement is working consistent with the current policy, that would be the repayment schedule. But it'll take, it probably won't...
Be supportive of that?
Yeah, herein lies the issue. We're negotiating contractual agreements with union policies and procedures, and we sign agreements, so both procedures have those agreements. Now, we're making an amendment to that procedure in that agreement, which I understand with, I negotiate union contracts every day in my life. However, this is somebody that serves our community, that takes risks, that goes in the burning buildings, so it's a tough call.
Well, but that piece with regard to the union contract, that will, that may add some more time to the process to get it done because these changes would have to be reviewed by the unions.
Right.
Would a memo of understanding suffice?
No.
All right.
Because this is, the city's employee regulations are adopted by ordinance of the city council, so you can't just change that by a memo of understanding.
So can we defer this to the city staff to take a look at this and to bring back a recommendation to it?
Well, I think we got direction from the council. We can figure out what a recommendation. The council would like to see something different than what's currently in there. That... That, as I understand, provides a little bit more flexibility maybe to the city manager, uh, to negotiate these things.
I would recommend, originally, his, his written request was, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Can we continue at that rate un, un, uh, until we bring back another policy rather than deferring it completely? Because this is the taxpayer money.
I don't think it, has it started yet because...
I, I was told it had started. Yes, it has started.
It has started?
Okay. Are you, are you looking or are you...
I thought that was a question from...
Oh, no, it's for you. Can we, can we do a partial?
We certainly can do that on a temporary, temporary basis if that's good.
So, reduce it until we bring a new policy forward?
The point being, the sooner for both the employee and the city, the sooner the payment gets completed, the, the, so it's better than deferring it at least. So, you at least are getting closer to end date on it.
So, I, I need to...
Can we just have an agreement on that? Or do we need a motion for that?
I think, I think the consensus of the council is on an interim basis to accept the two hundred and fifty dollars, is it a month?
That's what he originally asked for.
And then, but as soon as possible, bring back a change to the code.
Are there any obje, go ahead, Mr. Fletcher?
Um, yeah, I agree with that. I mean, the, the, deferring the payment or accepting what he has through, you know, until you guys can bring it back, which is probably going to be in January, I would imagine.
Yes, sir.
So, that gives him the opportunity, you know, obviously it is a, you know, bad situation all around. Get through the holidays and then come up with an agreement, and then that way it's not, you know, hurting him through the holidays, and then we can work it out afterwards.
Can you move forward on that? You have a...
I'm, I'm, I'm clear. There was consensus.
You have a consensus from the council. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Would anyone like to address the council during the citizens' forum? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, I recognize our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent item E, um, at each of your stations this evening, there was a revised resolution. I would ask that when you approve, uh, the consent agenda, that it is with the revised resolution.
What's the change?
The change was legal language, um, by, by Mr. Manzares.
This is the acquisition, the, provides the city manager with authority to acquire used, uh, trucks as the city might need. So, it provides a little bit more flexibility from the procurement perspective. The resolution in front of you has been drafted to be consistent with the procurement policy for when the city can, when the city council can waive the competitive bid process under what's referred to as negotiated procurement. So, essentially sets forth those findings that need to be to approve the item.
Thank you. We'll receive that then. Do you have any other items you wish to address on the...
No, thank you.
At this time, I, do any of the council members have any items they'd like to address? Councilmember Gilbert?
Yeah, on that, and, and we're talking about, uh, vehicles, single-exle trailer, tractors that are pulling, um, uh, waste material, uh, to the final destination. Uh, I reviewed that, and we're looking at two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that'd be eighty thousand dollars per vehicle, and you came under budget for that. I did my research and looked at the retail value of that. It's a lot higher, so I think you're all doing a great job. I mean, thank you for looking out for our best interest and the taxpayers, saving us money, 'cause, uh, you are definitely looking at it at sixty-nine thousand, fifty-nine thousand for vehicles that are in upwards of eighty thousand dollars in retail. So, that's the only thing I have to say about that specific item. Thank you for doing your due diligence. I don't know if it's Kevin or whoever did it.
Thank you to Kevin Feldlinger.
But, but man, great job. That was a great job.
Are there any other items, Mr. Penn? Start calling him Congressman. Councilman Urban?
It could happen.
Not ready to be promoted.
I'm getting old, guys.
I would just like to pull item C for a quick discussion.
Thank you. Item C will be pulled. Would anyone in the audience like, well, let's just deal first of all with item C. Mr. Urban?
Yes, so, um, I had a pretty lengthy discussion during my briefing with the city manager. I'm not really a fan of the, the way that this is done. I just feel like when we're asking council members to pick and choose which charities get what, it inherently gets political, and I would hope that we can find a more objective way to, to do this. I, I think that might be a discussion for a workshop in the future. But, um, with that said, I would like to, um, bring up the contribution to We Dare to Care. I was under the impression that previously they were getting an automatic contribution. They're very valuable to the city and the, the things that they provide to residents here in our city. And I would like to see if, uh, there's any interest on the council in giving them their, um, full request of the seventy-five hundred dollars that they requested because of that, they do, do so much in our community.
I'd also like to speak to this item before I allow Mr. Fletcher to speak. You know, the process, our grant process, I find very frustrating. I am certainly, I think it's a wonderful thing for our city to be able to give grants that help charitable organizations that are seeking to make a difference in our community. You know, you know, but when you have forty-three applications like we did this time, uh, many of them are for the very first time. You don't really know them. I just think, I'd like to ask the, the staff to look at maybe a different way that we could, uh, deal with this process of granting this money so that we make wise decisions and that we make sure we're making correct decisions. And to me, it would be very valuable maybe to have a workshop where we could talk as a council member without having to, you know, vote on, give a final vote to something. And, uh, so I'd like, certainly like to see that process. Bring us back something if there's no objections, uh, from our council. Bring us back some recommendations of how maybe we might could do this better and, uh, get our input on some ways that this could possibly handle more effectively. I would certainly support, uh, also the recommendation that Councilman Urban, uh, just made for the change, uh, in the allotment to We Dare to Care. Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Mayor. During my briefing, I brought up the same concerns and asked if we could, um, have either a, a workshop or something put together where we had, you know, a different process for doing this. And then also, I do agree with council member, or excuse me, Deputy Mayor, um, Urban on his request as well. So, I would, I would be willing to support that.
All right. Councilmember Gilbert?
Uh, I have the opportunity to be on the board of the TDC, which is the Tourism Development Council for Osceola County. And there's over half million dollars that we grant each year to different, um, different, uh, organizations through marketing and, and press like that. When I looked at this grant process, forgive me if I'm wrong, but if it didn't say St. Cloud, it wasn't for me. These are St. Cloud taxpayers. These are St. Cloud taxpayer dollars. Uh, I do believe it needs to be a city, um, grants, not, uh, a grants for people coming in the city and taking their money and going home. Uh, the TDC is a Tourism Development Council that is all for Osceola County, and our grants are for Osceola County, which St. Clu, St. Cloud is included. But I would like to see if we're going to grant money for the City of St. Cloud, that it stays in the City of St. Cloud. If you're not in the city and it's not participating and not benefiting the City of St. Cloud, I don't think you qualify. That's just me personally. There's state grants, there's federal grants, there's county grants, and there's city grants. And the city grants that we're granting money to the citizens of St. Cloud and the citizens of St. Cloud taxpayers need to stay in the City of St. Cloud. That's the only thing that my objective with that.
Uh, Manager Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did discuss this quite a bit this week. I have spoken with the Grants Division, and they are planning on putting together a workshop where we will discuss how you want our process moving forward. If you want a points-based system, if you want a committee, what types of things do you want and, and who should qualify? So, so we are, we will be putting that together before the next, um, grant period, and we will make sure to also, at that point, notify the previous recipients of whatever the new process ends up being.
When it comes to item C, we have made an amendment. Three people have already agreed. Would the other two like to join that agreement?
Sure.
I think so. We'll make that unanimous. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, could entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda? I so moved for the adoption of the consent agenda. Could I have a second?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Wake up.
I'm, I'm here, babe.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. The next item and portion of tonight's meeting is, uh, our public hearings, which brings us to item number one. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty-two-three dash two-eighteen R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty-two-two dash one-eighty-eight R, which adopted the fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-two-three budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs and various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Thank you.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, uh, this is our final budget amendment of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which ended on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. The Reader's Digest version of the background is, city code allows us to adjust the budget if funds are available, and the city manager has certified that funds are available to do the following, uh, budget amendment items. So, for the general fund, there is a zero net increase. It's the end-of-year realignment of funding for salary and benefits, uh, between departments. There's also a decrease in your city council contingency expenditures of a hundred and forty thousand, four fifty-four, and a decrease in intergovernmental transfers of a million, eighteen, nine hundred and eighty, an increase of one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four thirty-four in intergovernmental expenditures for capital projects. This all centers around the general fund portion, which is the first floor of the new city hall atrium. Our auditors, Purvis Gray, have indicated that that portion of the building needs, that capital asset needs to be, uh, under the general fund. So, it's, this is an accounting thing. It had all, uh, the general fund had already paid the building permit fund, the million, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty. The additional one hundred and forty thousand, four fifty-four is actually a result of, you know, the final cost of the building. The general fund paid for the first floor, which was, I believe, twenty-seven point fifty-four percent of the entire four-point-two million dollars. I know that was a lot, so if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, the capital projects fund, uh, has an increase of a million, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six. Uh, that's the intergovern, interfund transfer of a million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four thirty-four, which includes professional services. And I've got an extra one in there. It actually is one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, not eleven million. Sorry for that. And increased expenditures for other improvements by seventy-eight thousand for the following projects. BM twenty-one oh one, as I mentioned, the city hall atrium, and the PD modular office, uh, project PS twenty-three oh one, had a seventy-eight thousand dollar increase for some additional, uh, site, uh, development costs. Also, within the capital projects fund, uh, there was an increase in revenue from refund to prior year expense by seventy-one thousand, four twenty-two, and intergovernmental transfers back to the mobility fee fund by seventy-one thousand, four twenty-two. Uh, this is a result of, of an FDOT refund against project ST fifteen oh four. Yes, that was eight years ago. U.S. one ninety-two master arm agreement, so we did get some money back on that, and those funds are being returned to the mobility impact fee fund. A police impact fee fund had a zero increase. Increased expenditures for intergovernmental transfers for the aforementioned project by seventy-eight thousand, and a decrease in expenditures for professional services, which were originally budgeted for, uh, the design work for the PD Communication Center, which is now in a new project, uh, PS twenty-four oh one. Sanitation fee, uh, fu, or sanitation fund, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase. We are increasing our revenues from landfill fees by nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and increased expenditures for vehicle maintenance by nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Landfill revenues were higher than expected. Unfortunately, our vehicle maintenance costs, uh, far exceeded our budgets by nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand due to our aging sanitation fleet. Uh, the good news is there's numerous, uh, vehicle replacements that are in process. I believe we have two that are due to arrive in December. So, hopefully that will decrease substantially during this fiscal year. Staff recommendation is approval of resolution twenty-two-three dash two-eighteen R, and city council requested action is also approval of resolution number twenty-two-three dash two-eighteen R. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. If you'll stand by, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion or a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Matheny, second, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, if you'll read item number two in the record?
Public hearing for resolution number twenty-two-three dash two-nineteen R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number twenty-two-three dash one-fifty-four R, which adopted the fiscal year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs and various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. I normally try to avoid this, uh, but we are, uh, doing budget amendment number one. This is for the current fiscal year, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four. As I previously mentioned, city code allows us to amend the budget if funding, uh, is certified to be available by the city manager, which she has done so, uh, for the following items. A general fund increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, we're increasing revenue from prior year fund balance by a hundred and five thousand, and increased expenditures for maintenance contracts for the fire department by a hundred and five thousand for the additional cost of the annual letter of agreement with the Agency for Healthcare Administration. I don't know if our fire chief is still here. Basically, they help us collect, um, from like Medicare, um, for the ambulance services. Uh, the good news is, um, this past year, we got about two and a half times back what we paid them for. So, if this were to happen again, we will be getting somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars back for, for this particular agreement.
If I, if I can, this is the one that we said we would track for you and come back and tell you that they couldn't tell us how much we were gonna make. We just had to pay the certain amount. So, so there is the final answer. We made a hundred and five thousand dollars on that one.
We made that?
An extra.
Well, we, this, so it goes by the year. So, last year, we made about two and a half times what we paid. Don't exactly recall the exact amount, but we more than doubled what we paid for the agreement. This year, the agreement went substantially up by one hundred and five thousand, but we do expect an equal amount back. So, for that additional hundred and five thousand, we're liable to get maybe up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. Like, the fire chief would have to share the details of that. I'm not familiar with all the details of it, but we do make money on it. We get more money back than we put in, so the finance director is happy with it. St. Cloud, OUC, interlocal fund, five hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Increased revenue from prior year fund balance by five hundred and twenty thousand, and increased expenditures for other grants, uh, for the previously agreed-upon Madison Grove loan by four hundred and sixty thousand. That was budgeted in a prior year, but it's, has not occurred as of yet. Uh, so we added it back in the budget, so we're ready when the time comes. And increased expenditures by sixty thousand dollars for other business grants for... for a downtown business rental assistance program. Just as a reminder, we have a business development fund within the OUC fund. We can, you, we can use up to $500,000 per year out of that business development fund for economic development purposes, these kind of programs. I believe we have approximately $1.8 million still in that program, still in that fund for the business development purposes. It was placed in there way back when the OUC Interlocal Fund was first established. We used some of it during COVID, but over the years, we haven't used a lot. So just as a reminder, it is there. Capital Projects Fund, $1,525,000 increase. Increased revenue from inter-fund transfer by $1,525,000. Increased expenditures for professional services by $1 million, and that's for life safety work for Project PR 2201, the ranch renovations. And increased expenditures for land by $525,000 for Project PR 2401, parks land purchase to potentially purchase some land at the corner of Lake Shore Avenue and Indiana Avenue. I believe we're still waiting for the appraisal. I have not gotten final word on that. But the money will be available if we choose to proceed with that. Parks Impact Fee, also a $1,525,000 increase. Increased revenue from prior year fund balance by $1,525,000 and increased expenditures for intergovernmental transfers by the same amount for the aforementioned projects. Police Impact Fee, $500,000 increase. This is increased revenue from prior year fund balance by $500,000 and increased expenditures for machinery and equipment by $500,000 for additional police vehicles and emergency lighting equipment for six new police officers. These six police officers were actually added before we received the COPS grant so we could get the vehicles ordered, because it tends to take about 18 months to get the vehicles in. So in budget amendment number two, you will be getting another budget amendment for six more vehicles. We're not going to fill these, these particular six at the time, but we do want to get the vehicles en route. But the COPS grants, obviously, we will fill those as soon as we're able to do so. This is more about getting the vehicles ordered and en route so when it comes time to fill the positions, we actually have a vehicle for them. Sanitation Impact Fee Fund, modest $10,000 increase. Increased revenue from prior year fund balance by $10,000 and increased expenditures for machinery and equipment by $10,000 for the additional cost of a new side letter truck for a new collection route. Prices have continued to rise since the time we put the budget together. So the fund came up a little short. So we just needed to add just a little bit to take care of that excess. And staff recommendation is approval of resolution 2023-219R and City Council requested action is also approval of resolution 2023-219R. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion under a motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban and a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to items three and four. Will you please read those into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-47 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of industrial to approximately 3.47 acres, identified as Hickory Place Industrial Park Lot 1, located west of Hickory Tree Road and south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission Recommendation and Proof of Publication, Abliqability, and Effects Suburbility Conflicts, Copies on Files, and Effective Date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-48 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, rezoning 3.47 plus minus acres, identified as Hickory Place Industrial Park Lot 1 from HB Highway Business to I-2 Industrial 2, compatible with the industrial future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-47, generally located west of Hickory Tree Road and south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission Recommendation and Proof of Publication, Suburbility, and Effective Date.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dagmaris Legara, Deputy Director for Community Development. This item in front of you is the second and final hearing of a rezoning and a future land use change. This item was heard on October, for first reading, on October 12. The applicant, sorry, the location of the property is west of Hickory Tree Road, south of Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, and is approximately 3.47 acres. The applicant is requesting a future land use amendment from commercial to industrial and also a rezoning from Highway Business to Industrial 2. It has been determined that the current development on the property is not consistent with the underlying future land use designation and zoning. The surrounding areas has industrial future land use designations and zoning. And it has been determined that no facilities are adverse to city. Pretty sure that we have been very familiar from the first hearing. This was a case that was brought up to your attention back in 2021. We've been working with the applicant and this request will bring compliance with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. At the October 12 meeting, the staff recommendation for the rezoning, we were, we are proposing the rezoning with restrictions. Our Land Development Code allows for this and this included hours of operations, days of operations, dust mitigation, landscaping and noise mitigation, and also no deliveries of materials outside the operational hours, loading and unloading criteria, concrete, crushing machinery location, and also criteria for the outdoor storage. These documents, these requirements are within the agreement, performance agreement that the applicant has been presented. And at the October 12 meeting, council required, requested the applicant to meet with the community. There was a community meeting held November 1st. Some of the suggestions and concerns from the citizens, it was to be specific on the holidays and the operating hours. Also, to add a berm to the proposed six-foot masonry wall. Also, enforcing those mitigation, including frequency of water material piles, time limit for the approval of the site development plan, additional solutions for mitigation for sound outside the business hours. And there were some concerns about the use being operated without an active BTR. Staff has been working with the applicant. We have, we have recommendation. I don't know if it was distributed. We, the applicant proposed to make some changes to the, to the agreement. And based on the, on the meeting and the concerns of the citizen, the staff is requesting that these additional changes have been made into the agreement of the restricted zoning. Section 2C, to add language requiring the applicant to donate to the City Street Fund for noise and dust mitigation. Section 2D, the requirement for the applicant to submit a mini-site development plan to install the wall and the landscaping within 90 days. Section 2F, adding language requiring the use to comply with the City's Noise Control Ordinance. And Section 3D, revised language addressing the number of violations required before the performance standards return to the City Council for modification or revocation. The package that, that the city clerk, the city clerk is distributing is the revised agreement for the restrictions and the staff recommendation. So when, if you agree with staff recommendation, the motion should include those changes to the agreement. It is a staff recommendation at this time to recommend approval of the, of the future land use designation from commercial to industrial, ordinance 2023-47, and approval of the rezoning from HB to I-2 with the, with the changes to the performance standards. The applicant is here. He would like to have the opportunity to do a presentation in front of you. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. For the record, Brent Spain, 1809 Edgewater Drive, Orlando, Florida, 32804. And if I may, Mayor, if I could have leave, I have a hard copy of the presentation. If I could hand it out to the council members?
Please do so. Give it to the clerk at the desk. Thank you.
And then while that's being handed out, I don't know if there's a way for benefit of those in the audience, if we have an extra copy, if it can go on the overhead or not. All right. So I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible. I know time's valuable for everyone. But again, my name's Brent Spain. I'm a land use attorney. I'm board certified by the Florida Bar in city, county, and local government law. I've been practicing in Florida and central Florida for 23 years. So I'm going to go through these slides. And my assistant is doing a great job because she went right to the next slide. You heard some of this at the last meeting. I gave a very brief remarks at the last meeting, but for purposes of ensuring the record is complete, you all are very familiar with this. There are two types of land use decisions that you all decide on a routine basis. Those are legislative and quasi-judicial decisions. The small-scale comprehensive plan amendment before you this evening is what's known as a legislative decision. So it's subject to a fairly debatable standard. The rezoning, the concurrent rezoning, is a quasi-judicial decision. So it's subject to the competent substantial evidence standard, which Mr. Manzares alluded to at the last meeting. So under Florida law, my client has the initial burden of meeting the burden through competent substantial evidence that we meet the city's published criteria for what we're requesting. Once we meet that burden, it shifts to either the city or those in opposition to demonstrate through competent substantial evidence that, in fact, our project doesn't comply with the published, published criteria. In this regard, it's important to note that staff reports, which are in the packet, and I'm going to run through some in my presentation, are competent substantial evidence under Florida law. So with that said, you've heard your staff's presentation. Their written report is in your agenda packet. We would submit we've met our initial burden based on the staff report. If I could go to the next slide, please? These are just a few points. You've probably heard the city attorney say it at past meetings, but generalized statements of opposition from neighbors to a project do not constitute competent substantial evidence in and of themselves. And where technical expertise is required, Florida courts have held that lay opinion testimony does not constitute competent substantial evidence for denying a project in whole or in part. And the third bullet is about lay witness speculation about potential traffic problems, light and noise pollution, and a statement that this will just have generally unfavorable impacts. Again, doesn't rise to the level of competent substantial evidence. And the last thing, and I apologize for boring you all. Of all things, I hate playing lawyer, even though I am a lawyer, is that your role is to evaluate an application based on the published criteria. Many times, you all are in a difficult position. You're asked, well, do what's best or do what the constituents want. We don't care if it meets the criteria, Mayor, and council members deny this. And that's, unfortunately, that's not your role. These type of applications are not subject to a popularity test. Next slide, please. So just some additional background. This is a copy of the plat for this industrial park. It was originally acquired, the property by Randy and Rebecca Wright in 2004. It was platted in 2008. And the parcels before you this evening are two parcels. One is Lot 1, which is the larger parcel that has the star on it. It's up next to Hickory Tree Road. That's, that's 2.61 acres. And then at staff's request, the submittal was amended to bring in Track A, which is the little access road that's splitting Lot 1 and Lot 2 so that there wouldn't be a remnant track of highway business on this property. The Wrights no longer own this property. It's owned by Hickory Tree Industrial LLC, which is Mr. Wright's company. And then Hickory Place Industrial Park Property Owners Association owns Track A. Next slide, please. This is just real quick and easy. So we all have our bearings. This is an aerial of the site and the star is where the subject property is located. Next slide, please. This was alluded to at the last meeting, but I think a graphic helps sort of hit it home a little bit more. The, you have two maps on this page. Obviously, the site is in red. It's marked with a little yellow star on the overhead. The image on the left is the city's future land use map. So all the light gray on that map is industrial property. So you can see that presently, everything to the north and west of this site is industrial. In fact, we're the lone little red commercial tract down there on the southeast. The map on the right is the city's existing zoning map. And you'll see that everything, again, directly to the north and west is either three shades of gray. So the lightest gray is I-1, which there's one parcel right above that gray, the green piece. The dark gray, which is the majority of it, is I-3. And then the medium gray, which is right to the north and west of us and scattered throughout, that's I-2, that's I2, which is what the request before you this evening is. Next slide. So this came up, I believe, an individual at the community meeting asked about the county zoning and land use. And this was just, so this would also be in the record. You can see, again, the site's marked with the little red star. But you'll see to the west, all that gray in the middle, that's unincorporated property. The map on the left is the county's future land use map. All that property is industrial in Osceola County. And then when you look at the image on the right, that's the county's zoning map. So again, the parcels closest to us, you'll see are zoned IG, which is industrial general under the county's land development code. Next slide. And we're going to go through these pretty quickly. This is just to give you a history about it. We walked through this at the community meeting. And again, I believe it was Councilmember Urban had asked us to do that. We did that. We sent out, I believe, more than 96 notices. In fact, we overmailed the notice. We had approximately six people sign the sign in sheet. I believe there are a couple more individuals in attendance that did not sign the sign in sheet. But this process, we explained to them, began back in August of 2021. And those are copies of the first pages of both the land use application and the zoning application, which are the requests before you this evening. Next slide. We touched upon it last time, but this is just the cover sheet of the staff report from back in January of 2022. And it's a little difficult to read on the overhead, but in Bullet 1, this has to do with the future land use map amendment. The staff at that time said, "The proposed conference plan amendment to industrial will not have an adverse influence on living conditions in the neighborhood, nor create an isolated district. It would represent a continuation of the existing pattern of development north of the subject property with a similar density and intensity and establishing a consistent development pattern." The staff recommended approval of that, as did the planning commission for the city. Next slide. And this is just the staff report for the rezoning from January of 2022. Again, Bullet Point 1 under the findings. And again, I didn't include the page. I would just incorporate this into the record. But the staff went through all 16 criteria in your code, demonstrating how we met them. But again, quoting, it says, "The proposed zoning map amendment to industrial will not have an adverse influence on living conditions in the neighborhood, nor create an isolated district. It would represent a continuation of the existing pattern of development north of the subject properties with a similar density and intensity and establishing a consistent development pattern." And again, that rezoning was recommended for approval, and the P and Z also recommended approval. That brings us to this council back in January of 2022, which three of you were members, two of you were not. At that hearing, it was just a first reading. But again, on the right-hand side, under Bullet 5 and 6, the board, 5 to 0, moved the matter forward on first reading with a stipulation to address noise concerns prior to the final reading. Next slide. So between then and now, there was some delay. In February of 2022, my client, before I represented Mr. Wright, was advised that he would need to change the application to go from instead of I2 to go to I3. Consistent with that, and that's the page, the image on the left, is my client did in July 2022 submit a revised application to I3 as directed. In August of 2022, went to DRC. There were no comments. And then in September of 2022, the applicant received some comments from staff and provided additional documentation. Between then and April 2023, it was sort of in limbo. In April 2023, the new project planner, Francine, emailed out to my client and their prior counsel or co-counsel on this matter, asking us which application we wish to travel under. So at that time, we advised that we want to travel under the original application. And the reason for that is, under the city's code, I3 requires a minimum of five acres. We don't have five acres. And the uses that are allowed in I3 are those that are allowed in I1, I2, and I2A. So we couldn't satisfy the I3. In June of 2023, I got hired in March of 2023. We met with city staff to discuss performance standards. It was a productive meeting. We got direction on the key points on that. And that's what has brought our application forward. Next slide, please. Staff already went over this, Dag Marie. But again, we had, October 12th, we were before you. The staff recommended approval, and the staff is recommending approval this evening with the modifications that we negotiated prior to October 12th and then subsequent to last week's community meeting. Next page. These are the Mashmire performance standards. Mashmire is immediately to our north. It's a cement plant. It operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We were provided these originally to use as a template for our performance standards. And you'll see over at the right, they're subject to four performance standards. One is no deliveries of aggregates shall be permitted between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Two, every effort shall be made to avoid the banging of tailgates on trucks between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Three, every effort shall be made to avoid backup beepers from going off on trucks or equipment between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And then four, actually, to their benefit, the loading of trucks shall be permitted at all hours without limitations, provided they try to comply with 1 through 3. So we took that as our model. And then I want to show you where we ended up with the staff's assistance and diligence in trying to make these much better performance standards. So you heard some of those alluded to. Here was the latest draft that I had. There were some revisions between this draft and now, which we are in full agreement on, except for one, which I will touch upon. But we imposed hours of operation, so there's no uncertainty when my client will operate. It's Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We included under 2B hours, days of operation. We'll be open Monday through Saturday and closed every Sunday. In light of the community meeting, because it was a fair question. An individual asked, well, what about holidays? And I said, you know, we hadn't actually addressed that. We're happy to do that, so we've done that. We specify that we will be closed on Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. So we tried to capture all the really big, key, three-day weekends when folks are at home. And then also, you know, Christmas and the like may fall in the middle of the week. There's a paragraph regarding dust mitigation. We touched upon this some last meeting. It's been revised slightly. We had committed to routinely watering the material piles at least every two hours during the hours of operation to reduce dust. And then if the city reached out to us, because let's say it was extremely dry conditions, which I had been informed the city does sometimes with subdivisions, we would do an additional watering. Following the community meeting, language has been added that outside of the hours of operation, the operator agrees periodically water material piles via timed mister or similar apparatus or another proposed method that's acceptable to the city to mitigate dust. So we're mitigating dust while we're open, and we've now added language to try to mitigate it even when we're not operating. We have Paragraph D regarding the site development plan. We've ratcheted this down with staff's assistance because some folks had asked, well, how long is it going to take? What's the timeframe? So again, no later than six months after the city council's approval, the development review applications, which are what are before you this evening, we will have to submit a site development plan to bring the site and use into compliance. And then we will, this is new language this evening, we'll respond to site development plan comments within 30 days from staff, unless we get an extension and are working diligently to respond. And then they have added a condition, which we're not opposed to. I don't have the language in front of me, but it was shared with me that essentially, we'll do a mini mini-site development plan for the wall and landscaping to ensure that those get installed within 90 days of the site development plan approval. Because again, that was a question at the community meeting. Well, if the site development plan gets approval, how long do they have to do some of these things? And we said, no problem. We'll commit to a timeframe to make sure the wall and landscaping go in quickly. So it's not, well, the site development plan's good for a year, and then you can get an extension, and they haven't done anything. In Paragraph E, again, the landscaping of the wall, we talked about this before. We had agreed to install a six-foot-high masonry wall consistent with what Mashmire did, as well as canopy trees every 25 feet with shrubbery hedge in between those trees. What's changed between when I was here last and now is we've committed to doing a two-to-three-foot-high berm, and the wall will be installed on top of that berms, bringing the screen to eight to nine feet. The noise mitigation, that was in there last time. Again, to clear up any confusion between us and perhaps Mashmire, the other cement plant, we will not have deliveries arriving in off-hours. We will not be loading and unloading trucks outside the hours of operation. The concrete crushing machinery will not be operated, repaired, or maintained outside the hours of operation. And then a condition was added because it became apparent at the community meeting that the noise concerns that the neighbors are experiencing really are arising from the cement plant. Late at night. The timeframes, we were told, are past 11:00 PM, 2:30 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, and are banging sounds, which are related to are related affiliated to when cement hardens inside the barrels and they have to chisel it out. My client does none of that. We're not going to operate in those hours. We've put it in writing, we're not going to operate in the hours. And we'll get to it in a minute. There's actually an enforcement mechanism. If we meet so many violations, that staff can bring it back before you all, and you can modify these performance standards. But we did add a sentence at the end of F, in light of those remarks, saying, "Operation of other loud mechanical equipment such as jackhammers, generators, et cetera, shall not occur outside of hours of operation." Just to be clear that we will not be doing those things. So if they hear that at 2:00 in the morning, it's not going to be my client, and the issue is with an adjacent operator. And then G was outdoor storage, which has remained the same. Again, we're going to comply with the code requirements and the screening requirements in that regard. The one thing I did want to mention, and staff alluded to it, and it's not on my slide, but there is a provision in there that if, and the city attorney revised it. Initially, it was five violations. It's been reduced down to three violations in any 12-month period, that the staff can bring these performance standards back before you all for modification. And we're not, we're accepting that proposed change. I forget what paragraph it's in, but it's somewhere in Paragraph 3, which isn't on my slide. So if we could have next slide, please? This is a slide trying to put in context where we are located in respect to surrounding residential development. So just so everyone knows, when we did a notice for the community meeting, we were told 500 feet. So the diagram on the left, the black and white, that's a 500-foot buffer. It's generated by the county property appraiser. And you'll see, when you go through that, we clip five residential properties on the east side of Hickory Tree Road, and we barely touch them. So when we did the mail notice for the community meeting, based on direction from staff, we mailed not only everybody in the 500-foot radius, but if we touched any property in the subdivision, we mailed everybody in that subdivision. But again, you can see on the aerial on the right, the OUC site to the north. So it's the large, clear dirt site. That's in much closer proximity to the residential property, as is the Mashmire facility. And then the yellow and red ovals, those are circling existing vegetative buffers that exist between our site and the residential to the east. So we're separated by two stormwater ponds plus the mature vegetation. And if you have the street view, if we could put that up the next slide. So this is a street view looking from my client's property across that stormwater pond to that existing vegetation. So it's fully mature. I think through that, when you look at that picture close, you can barely see a part of one house. And so that's the one condition that's been proposed this evening that we're asking you all to potentially remove or substantially modify. It was a condition that didn't come about from the community meeting, is a request that we donate $24,000 for plantings of trees on this side of Hickory Tree Road, where we're already planting new trees on our side. And our position would be, that's about as good of a buffer as one can have. That's fully mature and grown in. Now, we've been told there are some gaps in that buffer. But if we can go back one page to the aerial, you'll see the gap in that buffer is north of our site. It's what's immediately east of Mashmire's site. But even if we were to measure that, that's a little bit over 300 feet. And if you say, well, you would plant a live oak every 25 to 30 feet, I would submit the cost of those live oaks would be about $3,600 at a three-inch caliber tree installed, not $24,000. And respectfully, we submit our site is adequately screened. Mashmires may not be screened from that subdivision, but my client respectfully submits it's not our obligation to screen the Mashmire facility. So we would ask that that condition be omitted. Every other condition that's in the revised submittal that staff provided to you this evening, we are in support of, other than that condition, which I think is at the bottom of Section 2C. If I could go to the next slide? So yesterday, our site manager went out with a noise meter to take a noise reading in the adjoining neighborhood in two different locations. So on the map on the left, the area circled in red is where this noise reading is taken. This is taken while all facilities are operating. So my client's facility is operating, the Mashmire facility's operating, the other cement plant is operating, and you have all the ambient background noise with the traffic and the like. And you can see the reading on that meter is 51.9. And we're going to get to a slide here in a minute to show you what 51.9 decibels equates to in everyday life. If I could go to the next slide, please? This, we got permission from a homeowner to go into the backyard. And this is a reading from the area circled in red. And you'll see that this reading, again, this is outside a home with all three facilities operating, plus the traffic. This is 59.1 decibels. If I could go to the next slide? So what is that range? And if you look on the chart, the chart on the left is a decibel chart available online. The one on the right I brought, that's from University of Florida. So I think that's relevant in case someone were to say, well, you have to impose this decibel requirement. You'd be amazed at some of the common, everyday things that people use that are much higher than people think they are. For example, a vacuum cleaner is 87 decibels. But if you go over to the color chart on the left, you'll see that in the 50-decibel range, that's between a quiet rural and a quiet urban area is essentially a dishwasher in the adjoining room. It's actually lower than a vacuum cleaner, and it's lower than normal speech and conversation decibel levels. So again, the suggestion the suggestion that somehow we are creating an unreasonable noise burden, I would submit, is not substantiated by any competent substantial evidence. Again, the noise complaints we heard at the community meeting were late night, early morning, which were clearly tied to the cement plants. And again, that reading that we took yesterday with a sound meter, not on a cell phone or the like, actually demonstrates that with everything running, it's in the quiet rural to quiet urban decibel range. Next slide, please? This was something we had, and I didn't have it on me to introduce at the last meeting in a slide. But back in May, a citizen called the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and alleged that our client's facility was either violating emissions requirements or had substantial emissions. This is a sheet the FDP sent out, their own engineer. They come out pseudo-unannounced and say, hey, I'm here to do emission readings. And as you'll see on this chart, the emissions essentially were minimal to nonexistent. So we felt it important to include this in the record this evening to the extent someone suggested that our facility is causing an emissions problem or is spitting out particulate matter. Next slide. And I promise I only have one more after this. But I want to touch upon a little bit of the local economic impact of this facility. And we submit it has a direct impact on the local community and greatly promotes infrastructure and businesses within the city. It also helps keep old concrete out of the local landfills, and it repurposes such materials either for road base. You know, it's used crushed concrete in landscaping. It's very popular these days. I have it at my house. I have it at my house, and it's much more affordable than buying a rock. Some of the local customers include the city itself. We've done Cathcart Construction Company projects, including Lake Shore Utility as well as St. Cloud Revitalization. We've worked on the downtown St. Cloud infrastructure, Jack Brack Road and Arkusie Road. Other major products, or projects for which material has been provided include Harmony West, the OUC facility, Waste Connections and Omni Waste, Bay Lakes, Deer Run, and the Starbucks on Old Canoe Creek Road. So it's a locally owned company, providing direct benefits to the surrounding community. So with that said, and I appreciate your patience, unfortunately, when you're in my position, I have to run through some of these steps to ensure that we're meeting our burden, which respectfully I say and submit we did, just based on the staff report alone. But I'd further submit these documents and the sound readings and the photographs are further competent substantial evidence that we meet the city's code criteria. So we would respectfully request approval of a small-scale plan amendment from commercial to industrial. It's consistent with everything around us. The only thing that's not industrial around us is stuff that's separated by a roadway and stormwater ponds and is located in the county, and it's LDR, it's Low Density Residential. And then we request approval of the rezoning, subject to all the revised conditions other than the payment of $24,000 for the City Tree Fund for trees on the east side of Hickory Tree Road. Again, we're planting the trees on our side, we have no problem with that, and we have no issue with any of the other proposed conditions as revised this evening. And lastly, I would just submit that the 16 review criteria that were reviewed last January, January 2022, as well as now, we've demonstrated we meet all of those. So while I envision you're going to hear from some folks, and I empathize and understand their position, and I would respectfully ask a few minutes to address any comments that are made. Again, the rule before you this evening is, have we met the 16 review criteria? And we submit we do. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mayor, if I could just reserve a few minutes after public comment.
Thank you. If you remain ready for that, we'll receive public comment at this time. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Shepler, 2209 Spring Lake Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. And before that clock starts, I need to say, if everybody in the group here had the time that he had to talk, we could rebuttal almost everything he said. My name is Jeff Shepler. I live at 2209 Spring Lake Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I represent myself, as well as my 91-year-old parents, Lloyd and Nancy Shepler, who own the house at 2191 Spring Lake Circle. I trust you've all read the email I sent to you on November 5th and listened to the video I emailed to you on October 12th. My property has been impacted by decisions the St. Cloud City Council has made concerning future land use and zoning maps. Most recently, it was the amendments made relating to Thompson Grove at Tayway Drive at 192, as well as the property located at 192 east of Live Oak Boulevard, where the ER and the daycare is being built, not to mention the lights from the Rockers Locker RV storage at 192 across from Thompson Grove. Now I am potentially being impacted by future land use amendments and zoning amendments requested by Hickory Place Industrial LLC for the property in question along Hickory Tree Road so that CND Concrete Recycling can now operate legally. On behalf of myself and my parents, I request that the future land use amendment and zoning map not be approved, as well as any of those other things that the attorney suggested. There was no consensus at the public, at the community meeting. If approved, what is to prevent expansion of the CND Concrete Recycling or other concrete crushing businesses from starting, adding more noise to existing noise? What started as one concrete plant in the area south of Highway 192 between Old Hickory Tree and Hickory Tree Road has now grown to four concrete plants. What prevents the same future land use zoning changes for the two parcels immediately south of Hickory Place Industrial Lot 1, also owned by Mr. Wright? Noise from the concrete recycling facility is more than the noise from the nearby concrete facilities. He is talking about the banging at night. I now know to call the police department when that banging starts. The noise from CND is loud enough and constant enough that we cannot have the windows open at our house to, when it's nice out, because of all the crushing. It's also not enjoyable being in our yard because of the constant noise. I used to work in an office that had white noise. Each day I would come home agitated and with elevated blood pressure due to the prolonged having to, or the pressure from having to listen to the white noise all day long. I'm going to keep going.
Need to wrap it up real quick, please.
I will. Each day, according to the CDC, prolonged exposure can cause increased stress and elevated blood pressure, what I experienced. What about other issues? Vibration, dust, water going to Live Oak Lake, traffic? Because of time constraints, I can't even address those issues. If the changes are approved, the city needs to have in place measurable limits for noise, dust, and runoff. The city can hire me to monitor, to make sure the businesses are doing it right. Are they watering every two hours like they say? I'll gladly be hired to monitor it. Again, I request that these changes not be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Shepler. Please hold your applause.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Shepler. I live at 2209 Spring Lake Circle, St. Cloud. I didn't appreciate the attorney, Mr. Spain, totally saying that what we said has no value to you and that you must do what he says. That was very demeaning, demoralizing, and why are we even here? I went to the public meeting with him. There was no consensus. There were more than six people there. I didn't even know to sign up. We were very quiet, and we listened. We did not talk or come to consensus. I've resided in my home since the summer of 1999, and I've seen many changes. I remember when there were cows on the property. I'm not naive enough to ask for the cows to come back. But I was happy when Starbucks, McDonald's, and OUC and a bank came there. The attorney many times, even at our meeting, mentioned Mashmire. Mashmire has been there, and we did not have noise problems. The noise problem started when the concrete crushing facility started. My husband calls if there's noise, and he, we, it's unfair to compare the two. It's like apples and oranges. A cement plant and cement crushing is totally different. I questioned CND Recycling beginning operation without proper zoning in the first place. My husband and I own a business. It's like, we don't do any business until our license and insurance and everything is in line. This company started and has been going on without the proper zoning. We were told it was okay because he made the application. That's like saying, oh, I had an accident, now I'll go get the insurance. It's okay, right? No, no business would do that, yet this one is allowed to, and it's very frustrating. As my husband said, we have felt helpless in the process, coming before you time and time again, and nothing matters, nothing happens. You do what you want to do, you do what they want you to do, and I challenge you. St. Cloud is moving and shaking and growing so much. You will probably annex us, though none of us want it. Do you really want industrial two in the middle of St. Cloud? In the middle of St. Cloud? You have to think about that. I realize the land use person says, no problem, but she doesn't live there. South of us, there are tons of homes. If you do the, how much our homes are worth, it's a lot of money. And what would stop them from doing another one? I respectfully ask you not to approve the zoning change.
Thank you, Ms. Shepler.
I'm Robert Church. I live at 2055 Live Oak Boulevard in St. Cloud. I am the property closest to the land that you're wanting to zone. I came before you about four or five years ago when you were putting in the cement plant, and I was the only guy that showed up in my whole neighborhood. And I told you about, we're a residential neighborhood here, you might want to do that. Oh, I was told, we're going to build eight-foot walls, you're never going to know we're even there. But I got to tell you, folks, we do know they're there. I can't even go in my pool area because they're so filthy from the dirt and the dust from that cement plant. I go outside, all I hear is beep, 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 and them trucks backing up all day. Now you want to put another plant that's going to cause even more noise, and I've heard that too. Now it sounds like a jackhammer going off. My wife has MS. We moved here because she's in a wheelchair, I needed a home with a pool, it's our retirement home. She has to go in that pool three times a week for therapy. And as filthy as everything is, you can't deal with it anymore. I have to change the filters in my house once a month. Before that plant was put in, I did it every three, four months, like a normal person. And this is what we're having to deal with. I realize that they need to have progress, but they can put that anywhere but next to a residential neighborhood. They don't have to be there. That should have been commercial property, the way it was zoned when I moved there 10 years ago. That was going to be a Lowell's or something like that across the street, some kind of a business. And we could have lived with that. But this dirt and mess, we just can't live with. And I beseech you, if you care about people at all, the people in your community, don't approve this, because they're just not worth it. It might give you a few dollars, but you'll get a lot more if you do what the people need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Thanks, Chief.
I may go and stand up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Brenda Polczynski, 2027, Live Oak Boulevard, St. Cloud, Florida. In our neighborhood, a cancer survivor calls her home a respite from her treatments. A widow recovers from her grief. Our policeman, firefighter, nurse, EMT, and city employees try to sleep during their off-shift hours. We do not want the dust and the noise from CND to operate at all. We request that the change from commercial to industrial zoning not be approved. Don't allow CND to continue crushing rocks six days a week from 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night, with their shortened hours on Saturdays. All day long, in our own homes and outside, we're disturbed. I understand the city needs revenue and industry, but at the impact of so many families, it needs also to be compatible to us living so close. There needs to be a limit to the noise and dust pollution allowance that can be testable and enforceable. We haven't heard anything about that. Our home is about as far away as you can get from the crushing plant, and it's miserable to work out in our yard or have family events outdoors because the racket during the day sometimes happens. The potential number of complaints that the city council will be getting will burden the police force also. Our only option to control the noise during the day is to call the police, who needs to be handling serious matters. Since there aren't decibel standards, there's nothing the police can do but keep coming out for each of our complaints. It's like Einstein's theory of insanity. We're calling the police over and over and expecting them to make it change. On the days that Mashmire, who is next to them and has no time restrictions, is jackhammering the concrete out of their fleet of trucks, it's unbearable for us talking nor in our houses. It's much louder than the exhaust brakes on a big rig. Then, when you add CND's rock crushing at the same time, we have to leave home or put earplugs in or turn the TV up loud. If St. Cloud approves CND continue operating, we request no rock crushing on Saturdays and a fine if they do. We would like the four-foot berm, which I heard tonight, and, but. Thank you.
My name is Skip Stowers, and I represent myself, my wife Debbie. We live at 2201 Spring Lake Circle. Before I begin, I'd just like to apologize to the commission and Mr. Spain for not being an expert in this matter, which deems my testimony here as useless and unlawfully binding. I find that unbelievable. We are all vehemently opposed to changing the zoning request by the landowner, Mr. Wright. None of us can fathom how this commission could even consider allowing this company to continue to operate in its present location. Here are the reasons why. Number one, noise pollution. We already have two major cement companies that are allowed to operate 24 hours a day producing deafening mechanical noises in the wee hours of the morning. The CND recycling company, loud noises, which you can't crush rocks without making loud noises, regardless of the extent of their decibel levels, will only add to the already unacceptable noise levels. Number two, health hazards. This plant runs a giant conveyor belt with crushed rock that produces large amounts of particulate dust that covers our neighborhood's cars, pool decks, and rooftops. When it rains, the runoff from this plant goes directly into Live Oak Lake, affecting all of us that live along the lakefront. Number three, the CND plant, and this is important, nobody's brought it up. The CND plant has illegally been operating for over 2.5 years in its present location. They knowingly illegally built this facility, hoping the city would change the zoning. This is not an opinion, but these are facts that I acquired from the city of St. Cloud. What is more disturbing, this company currently owes the city of St. Cloud $36,000 in fines for not complying with the current zoning. It has never paid one cent of this fine as of last week. How can this happen? How can we be expected to believe they would comply with any of these ridiculous restrictions set forth by the city? Number four, visual pollution. I've given you pictures that were taken last week that show the real proximity of our homes to this mess, not an aerial that was taken 5,000 feet in the air looking straight down. I entered the two photographs to show the unsightly nature of this business and the proximity to our community. to show the unsightly nature of this business and the proximity to our community. This view is what our neighbors see every day. It should be noted, and this is important, that our neighborhood was established well before any of the cement plants or the rock crushing facilities were in place. My home was built in 1987. In conclusion, this is a quality of life issue that affects our 80 homes as well as 125 new dwellings just to the east, not to mention the homes on the west side of this mess. It appears from my photographs that this is a somewhat mobile operation that can be moved to a more remote area. We respectfully request the commission to leave the zoning as it stands and to enforce the rules that are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stowers. Wayne Schultz.
My name is Wayne Schultz. I live at 2231 Spring Lake. I'm totally against this thing. Ever since they started this, my vehicles every morning are covered in dirt and dust. My pool is. I don't open my windows. My wife and I don't go out. We both have lung problems. It's just ridiculous. I don't know how y'all could even approve something like this or even think about it. You did the cement factory. They were supposed to keep the water down. They don't water. You go by there 90% of the time, burying a drop of water running anywhere. You believe this guy's gonna do that? I don't. And I don't think y'all should either. You know, it's getting to the point where everything being built around it, you're ruining the beautiful city with all this junk. And I'm hoping that y'all take a good look at this and think about what you're doing. I don't think anyone of you would want to live where we do, not now anyhow. And I've been in that house 42 years. I was the first one out there. It was beautiful here. This was a great town. But it's getting to the point where y'all proven stuff is ruining it, and the traffic is ridiculous. You're causing problems with all these entrances and stuff right there at Hickory Tree at the light. We've gotten so now, we can't even get out of our development because of all this stuff. We gotta wait forever. And nobody does anything. There are signs there of, don't block the exit. You think the police do anything? No. They sit in 7-Eleven, but they don't do anything. And it's just the same thing. The people cutting through. We've been almost hit two or three times of people cutting off of there because of that. And it's all with these factories. Now you got these cement trucks sitting there. And this guy making so much noise, you can't sleep. It's just ridiculous. People, there's a lot of old people in that area, all the way around it. And I think it's a waste that you even think about approving this. Think about the people in your city instead of the dollar all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Schultz. Su Du Chen, is that correct?
My name is Su Du Chen, and me and my husband live in the 2211 Spring Lake Circle. We have been there since 1986. We all feel it, that St. Cloud had changed to worse, okay? And I understand you guys don't have to live with the cement company next to you, the cement crush company next to you. I want you to know that I just have a very serious sinus problem. I was in the hospital. And recent, I just, it took me two months to recover, and I haven't completely recovered yet. So I, me and my husband, very against of these things. We had heard this so many times, the noise and everything. And like everybody experienced, we have the dust all over everywhere, you know? I want you to be very sincere to consider for us, as the human being. You know, most of the people are very busy to go to work eight to five, five days a week. They don't have time to come home to think. I had been talking to the neighbor at night when we go out to walk around the neighborhood, and I know they are very tired. They don't even have time to know what's going on in the surrounding. And another thing is, I think one of the lady sent me so many pages of what the lawyers say, the paper. You know, we were not brought up, we were not educated to understand, to read the spatial terminology of the law, okay? So I really feel like, since we work hard every day, just try to make a few dollars to come home to feed the family, and we don't have time to understand all these things. And you guys much more smarter than us because you handle, you are lawyers, you are politicians, and you are there, you can slip anything you want to slip in there, and you don't think for us. I want you to be very sincere to think about this. The impact is really deep on our life. And I understand when you retire, and you don't see it, you feel good. But life is not this way. One day, we all have to face the judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. David Wilkins.
Hello, my name is Dave Wilkins. I live at 2172 Spring Lake Circle. Been there for about 27 years. I have been working in audio professionally for the last 20 years. The filters on SPL meters that measures sound that Hugh brought up, there's four different filters, and they greatly change the numbers. What we're interested in the sound is the low-frequency sound that travels long distances with high energy. It doesn't dissipate very fast. It follows the inverse square law. If it's allowed at 100 feet, it'll only be 6 dB lower at 200 feet and 400 feet for another 6 dB. It travels a long, long ways. It does not pay attention to small walls or any object that is less than about two times its wavelength. So a kick drum, for example, is about 60 Hz. That's about 16 feet long. You'd have to have a wall 32 feet high to really get much of effect. Having a six-feet or eight-feet wall at 400 or 500 feet, you couldn't even measure the difference that that wall would make. So sound is the big issue, in my opinion, because I'm a sound guy. I also don't like the dust because concrete dust is alkaline, makes a base. When it rains just a little bit, you get a strong base on your grass, on your car, on your paint. It makes your plants turn yellow. It changes the pH of your soil over time. It's just a problem. This is a classic reason why we have zoning laws, not to have greatly divergent purposes of land adjacent to one another. And that's where you guys have been given tools to keep zoning control of it. And we don't need this kind of stuff right next to our residential neighborhood. We've been here longer than they have, so it wasn't like the grandfather clauses could be used. Anyway, that's the real issue, is the sound and the dust that causes. This decreases your quality of life. And the mitigation things of trees, my friend lives in Hickory Hollow. It's about 2,000 feet of trees between them. You can hear the sound just about as well. Trees don't do anything. It's really, it's really kind of a joke. So I don't want to see it happen. If you really have to have it there, you could build a containment building with sound absorption and a big dust filtering system. Of course, it would be super expensive, or you could just move the facility. So I respectfully submit that we would hope that you guys will disallow this, and I'll thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this? I am, that has something to add. If not, we will allow the applicant to readdress.
I appreciate it, Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate your patience. I'm gonna try to just run through some key items I heard. One, for the record, your city staff already has it, but I want to introduce it into the record. I have their original sign-in sheet. Francine Sutton can confirm. The sheet was going around. Everyone was asked to sign it. It was there the entire community meeting. So I want to...
That is not true.
Sir.
I want to introduce it into the record.
Please.
Jumping ahead to some of the issues that were raised. One, the concern about expansion. The performance standards before you were revised to address that issue. It was raised at the community meeting. Any expansion onto other property would have to actually come back before the city council and receive approval. Also, the concern about additional cement plants, just so you all know, the rezoning ordinance that's before you doesn't allow us to do every I-2 use, including cement plants. That was one of the uses that staff specifically excluded from the I-2 zoning, along with a lot of others, adult entertainment and other things. But the concern that suddenly there would be a third cement plant on this site if the crushing facility left because it's zoned I-2 is not possible under the proposal that's before you this evening. It's expressly excluded. The concern about operating at night or opening windows at night, again, the stipulations before you, we close at 5:00 PM. We don't operate at night. There was an issue about noise. The restrictions before you this evening were revised to explicitly put in there that our operations have to comply with the city's noise ordinance provisions. So we're being held to the same standard any other business operating within the city of St. Cloud is being held to. There was a statement made that I said citizens' comments don't matter. I would respectfully say that's not what I stated, nor was I suggesting that. What I was indicating is what courts have stated does or does not constitute competent substantial evidence. Certain things citizens can testify about, and it can rise to the level of competence substantial evidence. I provide you, those aren't my words. Those are words from Florida appellate courts, and the case names are actually cited on the slides in italics. I just don't like to put up case law on a zoning hearing. So that's the legal standard. In fact, we value the neighbors' opinions and comments. We welcomed council members' urban's requests that we hold a community meeting. We expedited that with the city council, our city staff's assistants. They found the location. They gave us the address list to mail. We mailed. We did a letter. We included a location map with that letter and indicated the purpose of that meeting. And the purpose of the meeting was to hear the neighbors. Is my client gonna be able to address and make everybody in this room happy? Probably not. But compared to the other operations that are out there, we are going leapfolds above and beyond that with hard and fast criteria that your staff can enforce, and they can bring my client and the operator back before you all. If they violate it three times in a 12-month period, they can bring it back to you all to modify it. There's nothing like that in the Mashmire performance standards, and the other cement plant doesn't have any performance standards, to my knowledge. There was a comment about the dust and noise. You actually heard some of the neighbors allude to the fact that it is the cement plant to a large extent. But the cement plants don't water. They have exposed aggregate out in the open air, and you heard one of the individuals say, they don't water. We're committing to watering on a two-hour timeframe, which frankly is very short. In fact, I think when we proposed it, I think some of the city staff said, are you sure? Two hours? Because it is very quickly together. There was a comment about putting industrial right in the middle of the city. Well, if you look at the map between Hickory Tree Road and Old Hickory Tree Road, pretty much every parcel in there, except the ones up on the highway, are industrial. The OUC site would probably be light industrial, but for the fact that it's a public entity. So I think it's labeled as public use and a zone PD, but it's more of a light industrial use. So this is really where the city has funneled industrial uses. In fact, I think in the January 2020, January 2022 staff report, they commented about how the city's industrial land use totals, it's actually underutilized. It was, I think, at like 4%. It was extremely low for industrial land use within the city's boundaries. There was a remark to a four-foot berm. I just wanted to clarify, we are wholly committed. We ask for a two, to do a two-to-three-foot berm that allows us to slope it down and put the wall on top, and we know that we can meet that in the area that's provided. There was, I only have a couple more comments. There was a remark about why we haven't paid the code enforcement fines. Well, we have to jump through all the hoops first. Those fines are still accruing. In fact, we can't even go and pay them until we've brought the property into compliance, which is what we've been trying to do since August of 2021. In fact, more than a year before the code enforcement proceeding was even commenced. Code enforcement started in August 2022. So again, if we bring the property into compliance this evening, the next step, in addition to the site development plan and immediately complying with the hours of operation, the days of operation, and the noise mitigation, the restriction before you says, all those performance standards go into effect immediately upon your approval. The only ones that don't go into effect are the ones that are dependent on the site development plan. But then, the next step for us would be to revisit the code enforcement matter. And there's a process for that through your code. Again, the dust, we would submit there are other contributing factors to that. Our client's gonna be the one in the area watering. The OUC site, I forget the total acreage on it. It was upwards of over 30 acres, I believe. That was a humongous development with a lot of dust in the area shown on the aerial with, I don't believe, any watering going on. And then, my second-to-last point is the suggestion that we're adjacent to residential, I respectfully submit is not accurate. Our adjacent properties are zoned, both zoned and planned, land use-wise, industrial. The property across the roadway and beyond the stormwater ponds is zoned residential in the county. As I've acknowledged, it's LDR, Low Density Residential. I think it's R1. But we're not adjacent to residentially-zoned property. That would, that would present an entirely different circumstance for you all to consider. And then, lastly, you've heard from people who are concerned. I get it, and you're, I don't, I wouldn't want to be in your position. It's a difficult position. But as I indicated at the beginning, your role in this, you wear sort of the judge's cap on the zoning, and you act in a quasi-judicial capacity. And in that capacity, you sit there and say, has Mr. Spain's client in their application comply with the 16 code criteria? Your staff has said on multiple occasions, we do. They said it a year and a half ago, and they've said it in October, and they've said it this evening. And you didn't hear one individual. You heard them raise valid concerns or things they don't like, and they're allowed to do that. But you didn't hear one individual come up here and say, Mr. Spain's client's application does not meet Section 3.24C, A, or B, or D, or E of your code. And I would submit the reason you didn't hear that is because we do comply with the code. I understand they don't like our client's proposal. They're entitled to that opinion. My client's entitled to come before you all and submit a project that complies with your code requirements. If they don't like the code, the solution is to amend the code. But I appreciate your patience, and I request your approval this evening.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I know it's hard to come after your busy day and sit through the meeting, and our meetings tend to be a little long sometimes. So I just want to thank everybody for that. I want to just mention a few things to my fellow counsel. As we sit up here, we, and it might predate a few of you, but we get constant complaints from a neighborhood that was built next to the transfer station. So when these complaints come up, you know, they complain about the noise and the dust and the smell and, you know, just constantly complaining about it. And in my mind, I'm thinking, well, you moved in next to the transfer station. The transfer station there was there before you. I mean, you should have looked around to see, like, what was around you. So obviously, in this case, we have the opposite, where we're approving things next to people that have lived there for a very long time. Also, at my current job, I know that our county road and bridge facilities used to be in the middle of nowhere with piles of dirt and material, but now everything developed around it. So there's constant complaints about dust and noise and trucks and beeping and things like that. And it's like, well, but that was here first, and everything came around it, you know, like, kind of should have looked around and see where you were moving into, you know? So... So I have a lot of sympathy for the comments that they're making, and personally, I don't feel like planting trees or shrubs is going to do anything to mitigate dust and noise. And also, in my job, I've dealt with sound walls, and sound walls are a completely different animal than a screen wall. So building a wall that's on a berm, you know, really isn't going to do anything when the piles of material far exceeds it. So I don't really think the planting and the watering and the berm and all that is really going to mitigate anything. And additionally, it's like, who's going to monitor it, right? Like, we don't have enough staff to, like, sit and monitor. I mean, I'm next to a, to a bar that's not supposed to have outside music, and I'm constantly hearing the outside music, you know? So, you know, it's like, it's just, there's too many things like that when we put the conditions on businesses. It's too hard for our staff to be able to really keep up with it, you know? So I know that the attorney kept saying substantial competent evidence, which I'm going to submit that the residents are substantial competent evidence, and that they're not speculating as to what could happen in the future. They're testifying what is happening. So I believe it is substantial competent evidence. So I won't be voting for this.
Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I just, first and foremost, want to say that the residents' concerns do have value. And just like Councilmember Matheny was saying, I mean, I don't ever want to claim to, that I know more than, than you guys do who have to live through this every day. So I do appreciate you showing up and speaking and taking the time to come here tonight. Your voice does have value to me. I just, I had a couple of questions. This is a tough one for me because we, there's legal parameters that we have to go by. I do have concerns over the repercussions if these conditions aren't followed. How is that going to be enforced? The fines paid, I think that was answered. The other thing, too, is regardless of what decision is made tonight, I had a chance to look over the, the performance standards for the Mashmire plant next door. I was pretty blown away at how much they can get away with as well. I mean, if this, if this one is going to go by these standards and the conditions that we have set, I think the Mashmire plant should also go by those standards. So I would like to see if the council would be interested in directing staff to take a look at that, maybe reevaluate their performance standards as well, regardless of what decision is made tonight, but that's all I have to say for now.
Mr. Manzares.
Can I just make a comment on that one particular thing? Deputy Mayor Urban, recognize that when the Mashmire plant issue was taking place, the Mashmire plant was permitted to operate at that location. So the performance standards were put in place, we're dealing with an existing permitted operation at the time. So it's a, it's a completely different situation than what you have here, because now, right here, you're dealing with a, a use that is not permitted to operate where it is. And that's why the performance standards are substantially different than they were for the Mashmire piece. We certainly can look into whether the Mashmire piece is complying, the Mashmire property is complying with those performance standards, but that's the reason why it really, in my opinion, it's apples and oranges when you look at it, because of the fact that one of the locations was already permitted to operate. Whether it was appropriate to be permitted or not, it was permitted at the time that those performance standards were put in place.
Okay, yeah, and I, I understand that. And I do also understand, there's a lot of construction going on in this area right now between the OUC facility, the commercial facility on the other side. And I did, I had an opportunity to visit the site. I spent some time in the area. I don't even want to claim that it was anything close to having to live through that, but I, I spent time in the area and tried to understand as best I could the, the noise and, and the atmosphere in that area. There's a lot going on, and it's not just this particular piece of property. There's a lot going on in this area, and I just definitely, if there's any options we have to, to evaluate the performance standards of other facilities in the area, I would, I would like to look at that, but I do understand that we might be limited in that as well.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, this was a tough one. I, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a normal guy, so I don't live an extravagant life, and I wasn't very happy. The residents outcry during the presentation, because I appreciate that presentation. However, I understand your concerns, and I went and met with the applicant, and I also met with some of the citizens. And this is a forum that we have to make the right decision or the best decision for the community. I'm going to have to defer to the city manager. If there's $36,000 worth of fines and someone says, well, I can't pay them because I'm waiting to, well, you can kind of, you can kind of pay the fines, or at least agree to pay the fines, instead of saying, we're not going to pay anything for two and a half years. So I, I understand that, and I understand the citizen. You look at Mount Peace, which was brought here in the 1800s, and that was outlining the city. We'll put the cemetery out there. Now, it's very much a part of the city, so that's in the growth. My concern, which I don't think anybody addressed, is the traffic. You have 50, 60 tons of equipment flying down Hickory Tree Road. You have no stop signs, you have no, and it, they're just, they're bowling down. And I don't know if anybody knows this, but most of those drivers are paid by load, not by hours. So the more loads they can get to the facility and back in the facility, and I don't think our infrastructure warrants where this location is. And I understand about the cities, and I understand about the DOS, and I understand about that, but I want to look at the safety of the citizens of St. Cloud. I've been there. I've pulled my truck up there. I've been with the citizens. Actually, the mayor and I pulled out and pulled in, and we did our due diligence at that plant. And my major concern was those trucks coming in and out there, flying, and the safety of our citizens. So I don't have the crystal ball. I do know that a business needs to be a business. I do know the citizens there are 1986, and there's 180 homes that were built after that plant was allowed to operate without a permit. But how did it get to this point where they, go ahead and submit your permit, and then keep on working, keep getting the fines, and not have to pay them because it's in litigation, I guess? I don't know. And I appreciate the lawyer's point of view. My son's a lawyer. I don't even understand his language, because I'm not, but, but I would like to see something that is beneficial for both the citizens and the business. And it's a tough thing, because we're growing, and there are going to be residential encompassed by industrial, and we need both. But I, I don't like the, the presentation, hey, we got $36,000 worth of fines, we'll pay them later, but right now, we're not going to pay them because something's going on. Send me a check for 15 or something like that, and say, we're working with the city. So that is my opinion on that. It's a tough decision. I understand business, and I understand residential, but I would like to see it worked out versus yea or nay. So that's just my opinion on it. I, I'm with both. I, I'm really disappointed that the citizens spoke up while the lawyer was speaking, because we're a professional organization, and we don't need clapping and yelling and going on, but I feel the hurt of the citizens by living there and seeing something overcoming their peaceful place of residence. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor. Give it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Manzares.
I just, if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Thank you.
We got the same beard. He's handsomer.
Well, I'm avoiding commenting on your comment, which would says, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a normal guy. So, I guess I didn't. Just quickly, from the code enforcement perspective, as you, well, under chapter 162, the code enforcement process is, the main, the main issue has always been compliance. And then the, the statute does require the, the code enforcement authority, the city, to provide an applicant with a reasonable opportunity to come into compliance. And so that's part of the reason why it's gone on a little while, is that the applicant does have a right to come into compliance. However, they do incur a fine, in this case, that is occurring, accruing on the property. So that's part of the reason why the delay. The other piece, as I think both Dagmarie and Mr. Spain pointed out, there was some extensive time lapse between when this was first, went to the planning and zoning commission, when it first went to the city council, and now brings us today. So that's part of the delay. But as has already been pointed out, that fine hasn't gone away. That fine continues to accrue, and that fine will continue to accrue until the property is brought into compliance. But I do want to make sure I clearly understand this, and I do believe this is, this is the case, and I'll verify that. It was mentioned, I think Mr. Spain mentioned, that if you approve this tonight, that that will bring a compliance with the code enforcement order. As I recall, that code enforcement order was issued with regard to, for an unpermitted use on the property. So even if you are to approve both of the items that are on the agenda tonight, I do not believe a permit will be issued for the act, for this prop, for this thing. There's still some steps that have to go through with regard to the site and the review of the site. So I, your action tonight will not, unless I'm correct, I will confirm it, will not bring this property into compliance with that code, and that fine will continue to accrue into the, those final steps are taking place.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman Fletcher.
So it's very frustrating, because, you know, we spend a lot of time working on our code and making sure that our code allows us to grow as the best city that we can. I'm a huge supporter of industrial. We need tons of more industrial in the city. And, you know, to the, to the attorney's point regarding the general statements by the neighbors, I know where you're coming from. I just believe that's a really bad way to start a presentation out. And then also, the, the overview of how a quasi-judicial hearing works. I believe in this particular case that our code is working, and let me explain why, is I don't believe this should be an I-2 request. I believe it should be an I-3 request. An I-3 request requires five acres, which the applicant does not meet. Therefore, the code worked. It's, in my opinion, it shouldn't be allowed to go here, based on that fact. When you speak of hoops that you've been, been working through for two and a half years, yes, everybody has to go through those hoops first before operating a concrete construction crushing plant in an area. You can't just start operating and then hope that the city brings it into compliance. It shouldn't be that way. We shouldn't be bringing your property into compliance. You should be bringing it into compliance. So, you know, and then the traffic, that's also, you know, a thing that Councilmember Gilbert brought up, which, you know, in a quasi-judicial meeting, you have to, those are the items that are important in a quasi-judicial meeting. And like you said, yes, there's case law that says the opinions of neighbors don't matter, but the items that I think I just brought up, the things that Councilwoman Matheny brought up, and the traffic concerns, I think those are some serious concerns regarding this. So those are my comments.
Again, I'd like to thank all of you who came to express your concerns, and I certainly understand your complaints and your concerns. I just want to assure you that the issue for this council, I don't think has ever been a money issue, and this is not a money issue for, for me, never has been. For me, it's a legal issue. And the first item, I have no problem passing the, the first item that is a future land use, because that's what, that's what's designated for that area, is it not? What I'm concerned about is how the land is being used and what's on it, and that would be rezoning it to an I-2. You know, if I had my choice, I'd much rather see it be an I-1, which would eliminate this, this possibility, but would still make it industrial, at least I think that's my understanding. I think the situation is also compounded, compounded by the fact that you have major work that's going on with OUC and Mashmire, and even if the concrete plan was not there, you would still have a major dust issue, just from those two things that have been going on. Mashmire's a real problem, but I think, if there's any way we can address that issue in the future, we need to. But I'd like for Mr. Manzares, if you could just speak to my comment about the first item, the future land use, and if we pass that, but yet we did not pass the second item or either amended it, what would be our options for us to possibly consider?
So if, your question is if you pass the first, the, the comp plan change, give it an assigned future land use of industrial? What would, what's your option on the zoning piece?
Yes.
Okay, well, right now, it's my understanding that the property is currently zoned highway business. So highway business is a consistent zoning use with a future land use of industrial. So if you were to approve the comp plan change, change the future land use to industrial, and you were to deny the applicant's request, there would be, there would be a consistency between the zoning designation and the land use, so it could continue like that without having to change anything. Today's application before you on the zoning piece is to go to I-2, so you could go to essentially anything that is less intense than an I-2, and as you mentioned, an I-1, and, and address it that way without doing it. If you were going to I-1, and to the extent they would be applicable to any use there, and I don't think they would, but the performance standards that you've been talking about tonight wouldn't be applicable in that zoning case, because they've been specifically tailored for a specific use that's there. So your options are, if you are to approve the first item and, and, and change it from commercial to industrial on the land use side, you could, the zoning could either be, the application could be denied, which would leave it at an HB, which would remain consistent, or highway business, which would remain consistent, or you could assign a less intense I-1, or you could approve it at the I-2 with the conditions that staff and the applicant have presented to you.
If it was changed to an I-1, could this rock crushing plant operation continue?
I do not think so, but I would defer to staff on that piece.
What could operate there? Ms. Miller.
I'm in the process of pulling up MUNI code. I don't know if our planning director or Ms. Segarra has the opportunity to, if they already have it.
And just so, if I may, just to continue, so you're, Mr. Spain is absolutely correct in how he presented to you the analysis that you're supposed to take on in this, in this quasi-judicial proceeding of it. The, the code sets forth 16 factors, criteria that, that the applicant is supposed to demonstrate they meet. So it's in your packet, it's part of this item, they're listed in this, as part of the staff memo, and they go through you. So if you believe that they've met all 16, and you agree with staff recommendation based on the information that has been provided to you and the information that was presented to you tonight, then you, essentially, you are, to be consistent with your code, you should approve the application. However, if you do not believe that all 16 have been met, then similarly, a denial of the application would be appropriate, and that's the key factor right there.
All right. Yes.
Good evening. Melissa Dunklin, Director of Community Development. The concrete crushing and batching is not a permissible use in the I-1 zoning district.
Or in highway business.
Or in highway business. That is correct.
Okay. What types of businesses would be permitted there?
Lesser, there would be lesser intense uses in the I-1 zoning district, which include, like, analysis or testing of samples, materials, so it's fully enclosed, industrial, manufacturing-type businesses. Says answering service, I think that's a little antiquated, but we're, we're working, currently working on updating our code. Minor and major mechanical repair, car washes, bakeries, if it's wholesale, bioanalytical labs, boat repair.
All right.
Okay, yes, there's a whole list.
But not rock crushing?
Correct. Not rock, rock crushing.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Is, I got a question for staff. Is rock crushing an I-2? Like, is it listed as rock crushing?
It's not listed, listed verbatim. Let me pull up the term that it's called. It's not listed, listed verbatim. Let me pull up the term that it's called. It's called concrete mixing and batching.
Okay. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of the discussions going on thus far? Make it quick.
I will. I'll, I'll just clarify with what Mr. Manzares said. I'm in full agreement with that. Tonight is step one in bringing it into compliance. The final step is the site development plan that we can't submit for until we get this approval. At that point, my understanding is the property would be fully in compliance. Those fines continue to accrue. Every jurisdiction I've dealt with, if I go in with a check, they will not take that check because the fine is a running lien on the property. So they want to create an impression that, well, we, we cashed Mr. Spain's check, so the lien is removed. Fines keep going. When we're in fully compliance, we have to go back before your magistrate and say, hey, either here's a check for the full amount of the fines, or hey, we'd like it reduced because of this. And my guess is the magistrate, in this case, is not going to reduce it to zero. So some amount will be paid between what's been accrued and a lower amount. But we're not, we're not dodging paying it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. It's interesting what staff just said, that it's not listed as rock crushing, but it's mixing and batching of concrete, which is not rock crushing. So why are we having this conversation, I guess is the question?
If I may, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I turned my light on. I did find it, I did find it in the table. You must understand, our, our table is many pages long. So, so immediately trying to find the answer is, is hard. Manufacturing, fabricating, processing, converting, altering, and assembling, and testing of products is a conditional use in I, in I-1. And I think, I think it could fall under that in I-1.
With the conditional use?
With a conditional use that would require public hearing and, and would have to come in front of you. And additionally, yes.
And Mayor, that was our position when that issue was raised, is what type of use are you, because you're not a cement plant, is that we're manufacturing and processing a material under your code?
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion from council? Any questions? Do you have any additional wisdom for us, Mr. Manzares?
Once again, it all comes down to that 16 criteria that's in your, that's in the staff memo.
Are, are any of those criterias, in your opinion, inflated in, in how they're addressed? That, you know, sometimes you go through these 16 criterias, they certainly kind of get, make some significant assumptions.
Again, and I can, I can just offer you my opinion on it, that you're, you are the decision maker on this stuff. I, I, I frankly believe under one of the criteria, number six on your criteria is change or changing conditions to make the passage of the proposed amendment necessary. And again, this is a zoning amendment. And the response to that is that essentially, yes, because proposed use is industrial, and then in italics, the, the response, and I believe this is staff's response actually, highway business zoning designation is not compatible with the existing use. Therefore, that's why it needs to change. I do believe, frankly, that that is sort of a backwards approach of dealing with it, basically saying that we need the zoning change because what we're doing doesn't meet the zoning code.
Right.
And I think that's how, that's how I read, and then maybe you, you're the final decision maker on it. So to answer your question, Mayor, I do think item six is one because of the fact, again, going back to what we've talked about, this, this use is on the property without any, with, it's an unpermitted use on the property. So, you know, that's one. And you've heard discussion regarding the area and the neighborhood, which is item number seven under the 16 criterias. I just, these are just things that, there's some others. Item 13 is one related to granting a special privilege. Again, back to the fact that you have a, a use that's already existing on the property as opposed to one that they're coming before you on a vacant piece of property and saying they want to, they want to do this.
Right.
And so, and there may, there may be some others, but I'm just glancing real quick.
Councilmember Matheny?
Yeah. And number eight says the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety. And the answer is no.
Right. All right. What is the, do you have anything else to add, Mr. Spain? And I'll give you one more shot.
Yeah, I don't have those criteria in front of me because they're back in my binder. So, but I think on number six, this, my understanding of how that was evaluated is the fact that the likelihood of somebody putting a highway business use on this site in light of the fact that the property is budding it to the north as a cement plant, the property is budding it to the west as a cement plant, and the property to the south in the county is a truck parking facility, is the minimus. So I think that's what staff was alluding to, is that the highway, highway business is not consistent with what's around it. Not that what my client was doing on the property is not consistent with highway business. As the other stuff on the traffic, throughout this seminal process, we, no issue has been raised with traffic. We've not been asked to state that we had to do a traffic study, and tonight is the first time we're hearing of that. The special privilege, I don't believe we're being conveyed a special privilege. We're being conveyed a use that's allowed on the property of the north and to the west. If anything, we're restricting it further than that street zoned property. And again, our immediate area neighbors are industrial property. So again, we submit, we comply with that criteria.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the council? First of all, we look at the first item, item number three. Do I have any motion, please? Twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven. Just fixing to dial for lack of a motion?
I think we, if, if the council's not inclined to approve it, then to just make this a little bit more confirmed as to the council's intention, you should, there should be a motion to deny the first item if that's how the council wants to proceed. And I, I know that sounds, but at least that sets forth all the, an understanding of exactly what happened, and the property owner understands their options about what they can do next if necessary.
All right.
A motion to deny.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for the denial of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Councilmember Fletcher.
And that's consistent with, and for one second, if I could, Mayor. So again, there's criteria that's set forth in it. So the council's position, that the application failed to meet that criteria.
That's, that's our position.
Thank you.
Is it, is that your motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Do I have a motion for denial of the next item, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight?
So moved.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny for denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, item number five. Madam Clerk, please read that into the record.
Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one ninety-five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a site development plan variance to reduce setbacks on a proposed site plan and alternative buffer design in I dash one industrial District One zoning designation on a 1.47 acres parcel of land located north of Seventeenth Street, south of East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway, east of Orange Avenue, and west of River Road, as described in the body of this resolution.
Thank you. If you are wanting to talk, please may go outside the, the auditorium here to do that, please. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. Good evening. Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This request before you tonight is for a site development plan variance for DMI Business Park. The future land use is industrial, and the zoning is industrial District One, I-1. The applicant is requesting approval of a site development plan variance to reduce the setbacks to the north and south. In addition to consideration of an alternative buffer design, there will be no adverse impacts to city facilities. Okay, some of the background. The subject property was annexed from the county around 2006 with an industrial future land use and zoning. Historical permit records show that there was once a single family residential home that was demolished in 2004. Council requested that the applicant hold a community meeting. The applicant did hold that community meeting on November 7th, and some of the feedback from the community included just general interest in the proposed development. They requested screening from the view of the development, which the applicant has proposed in their site development plan. They expressed concerns about drainage along the property to Bibbins and flooding to the community to the east and River Road, and they expressed concerns about lighting from across the street of an existing business. The specific request for this variance is a five-foot setback reduction from 15 feet to 10 feet on the north, from 15 feet to 12 feet on the south, and requesting an alternative buffer design from 20 feet, sorry, from 25 feet down to 12 feet. And the alternative buffer design would include several trees, trees and scrub plantings with a six-foot masonry wall. Here is a graphic representation for context showing the three requests. The applicant did confirm that the written application met the criteria. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions: that the site development plan must show the alternative buffer design as proposed with the variance application, and that the landscaping for the alternative buffer shall be as follows: 30 large trees, 20 smaller medium trees, one evergreen tree, and 455 shrubs, along with a six-foot tall masonry wall. And with, with the additional condition, that the proposed site plan must meet all other land development code regulations that are not specifically listed in this request. Likewise, it is requested that council approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one nine five R, and staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would like to speak to this? Please state your name and address.
Hi. Danny Martinez, 2420 Breeze Road, St. Cloud, Florida. And I concur with staff. And we did have the meeting. I explained everything to the residents about, you know, holding water on my site, the core samples we took out there, the lighting, you know, the wall, just a bunch of miscellaneous stuff. And basically it, really. So.
Thank you.
All right.
If you'll stay there. Would, just sit out, just sit onto the side if we can't see any questions come up. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If you please step forward and state your name and address to the record. And if you haven't filled out a slip, which I don't see, please do so before you finish.
Pastor August Odom, 1621 Orange Avenue, St. Cloud. We're used to everyone up there. I was at the meeting with Mr. Martinez, and so was a few others. And he explained everything and showed us the maps and everything, and everybody's satisfied with what he's going to do.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you, Mr. Odom. Would, would you like to speak, please? Please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Tiffany Rosetti.
Pull the microphone down so we can hear you well.
Hello, can you hear me now?
State your name and address again.
Tiffany Rosetti. I am 1505 Orange Avenue, the one directly next to him. He tried to purchase my property, but then lowballed me after he got everyone to approve on the other side. My mother went to the meeting because I unfortunately was not able to. I was working. I work a 10-hour day. She brought up things that we opposed, and no one cared. Everyone pushed it aside. No one even listened to the fact that he put up fences along our property without any permits. I was told this by staff in this council. I am extremely upset at the fact that they think that trees and putting a parking lot next to my property is going to make anything better. It's not going to make it better. That street has gotten worse since they started allowing businesses to come in. There's very few houses left there. I constantly have things ran over in my yard as, as it is for the businesses that are there. I cannot allow my child to go out in the front yard because there's, out of both businesses. That business directly across from me, and the business which is his, which is right next to mine. There's a small little house next to mine, and then he has right next to it. There's constant up and back and forth with trucks, and I, I don't approve it. I don't think, just like the other people, I don't think trees and a wall is going to fix anything. It's the traffic and the safety that concerns me. That's the biggest thing. It's, it's, it used to be a residential street, and it's not anymore. It's more industrial and more dangerous than anything. People drive down there way too fast, and I fear for my child. And like I said, I've gotten, I had a dumpster ran over. I had mailbox hit constantly. And these are not from residents. These are from industrial people that are on this street. So by allowing more things to be able to be done, it's not solving anything. It's just making it worse. Just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Need to fill out a form, please. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Would you like to respond to any of your concerns?
Well, as far as it goes, I don't really, I'm a site developer. I don't really spend no time there. I go in in the morning. I got one, one to two guys that work for me, and we'll pick up our machines or whatever, and we're out of there. What everybody else does in the neighborhood, I don't really see that many cars and trucks going through there. So I don't know where all that came from. And as far as the other stuff goes, I don't, you know, each person has his own opinion.
Thank you. Would anyone else that hasn't spoken like to speak to this item? If not, we will now have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny, I think is first.
Thank you. So at the last council meeting, I had asked for additional drainage information and spot topography, and I got something, but nothing looked different. I mean, I don't know if you could point out what changed in the submittal that we got?
I, I, the drawing that's already been, you know, reviewed, and it's got the spot grades that are existing in the back. Just like I explained to the neighborhood, you know, I put a dirt berm up there because when I got there, the water was draining towards the back. So I put a dirt berm up there to hold my water inside site. And then when I got the core samples back, they had a layer of hardpan down there. I busted it all out and put sand in there so the water dissipates, you know. And then for, you know, I explained to them like, you know, if the grade's already what they are in the backyard, I can't do anything about their side holding water or the drainage of what it is.
Right. Yeah, but the survey that's included doesn't have spot elevations outside of your property. That was what I was concerned about on the.
Well, it has two in the back.
On the east side. Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about the topography and the fill, and then there's a pond, and then you have seepage and things like that. Now, what I got from staff was, we'll work all those details out in the SCP, which I hope they will. I, I know that we have in the past approved things where the fill went all the way to the property line, you know, and, and we've put five feet of fill on property next to people. that are now down in a hole. I mean, so I was just concerned about that, the grading and the drainage, and I guess I didn't get any updated information, so. I'm kind of like in this hard spot, right? They're saying, well, we'll handle it as staff, so. I don't know. I just don't want to see where, you know, I've gone out with the previous city manager to projects, and, you know, the city will allow fill to go all the way to the property line, you know? So basically, you've pushed water onto this other property, and, you know, you're not holding all your water, and there's a pond right there on the, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that, like how much fill, and it's a tight site, so how you're gonna tie into the slopes and things. I didn't quite understand where her property was. Are you south of this property?
Yes.
On the south side, okay. So, that, I, I don't really know where to go with that, because I didn't get the information that I asked for.
Congressman Harris.
So, before you are, essentially, this is a variance for site development, site-related. So, Councilmember Matheny, if you are concerned about fill being placed in the reduced setback area, that is something that you could put in there as part of a condition, if that's what your concern is. In other words, they can't use that, they're asking for a reduction of the setbacks on the north side and on the south side.
Yeah.
So, if that's what your concern is.
That's a good idea, to say there's no fill within those areas. I just like to leave room, and I don't know what the city code is, we've talked about it, I don't know if I talked about it with the current city manager, but I talked about it with the old city manager about changing the code to make sure there was something in there that says you can't place fill within some distance. I think the county is like 18 inches, but 18 inches frankly isn't enough.
So, it was with the prior city manager, I think we were given direction to look at that, and at the time, the county was also looking at, doing a similar action. So, city staff was waiting for the county to change their code, and I think we were gonna try to be consistent with assuming that it was gonna change. We can follow up and make sure that it didn't change, but it sounds like the county hasn't done it yet.
Or we can just be a leader and.
Do it ourselves.
Fix it ourselves.
Yeah.
Well, but again, if you feel from your experience that fill can't go to the property line, maybe, maybe you can go within the setback area, but maybe not only to the property line, that would be, that's a reasonable condition on the variance request that's before you.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Gilbert.
I happen to go to the meeting as an observer, and I met with Pastor Augusta, and he's a great guy over there, and the developer just answered every question. Again, I didn't say anything, I was just an observer there. But I would agree with the motion, Ms. Matheny, if we go with your recommendations, that would be great, but I did know they met with the residents, and applicant was very willing to comply with what they had. So, with your knowledge and expertise in that area, with your motions of what they have to do, that's what I would agree to.
Okay.
Do we have any further discussion or questions from council? Could I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with no fill within the setback area.
With that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second. Councilmember Fletcher?
Nope, Gilbert.
Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Congressman Gilbert.
And with those exceptions that were added, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Can I make one more comment?
Make it quick.
There is gonna be a wall back there, so the wall will be put into place, so the fill will come off of the top of the berm down to the bottom of the wall. So, it's not gonna be like you running dirt all the way up, well, you know what I'm talking about. So, it pretty much meets your criteria.
All right.
It's been passed, so we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Item number six, Madam Clerk.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-52. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the Platte Rideaway located south of Winter Calm Lane and Calm Soulway, east of Tahuqua Boulevard, and west of Cross Prairie Parkway, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for separability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, again, Community Development Director. This request is for an abandonment of ride-of-way in the development known as Tahuqua. The applicant requests the abandonment of a 40-foot wide ride-of-way as it is no longer necessary for roadway construction and runs through the proposed high school site. Here's a graphic representation depicting the sketch of the legal descriptions. The highlighted areas in yellow are to be abandoned. The request was routed for review, and no objections were received. Therefore, staff recommends approval and requests that council approve ordinance number 2023-52. Staff and the applicant, I believe, is available for questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Of course she would.
Good evening, Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I actually have nothing to say except for we agree with staff's comments, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, hang on. Would anyone of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number seven, Madam Clerk?
Public hearing for Resolution Number 2023-193R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the St. Cloud Seaplane Master Plan, providing for conflict and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Terry Lloyd, Aviation Coordinator for the City of St. Cloud.
And I'm Mike Hotlow with AVCON.
We can start the presentation.
You should have a clicker up there.
Okay. Do you want to start, or?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just start with a couple of brief comments. This master plan, we're requesting to submit this to Florida Department of Aviation, Florida Department of Transportation Aviation Branch for review and acceptance by them. Completing the master plan is in fulfillment of the seaplane feasibility study that we submitted to the state and was subsequently approved, and this would be the next step in the development of the seaplane base. The period of the master plan is 20 years. I like to, and it's, it's an FAA process, so it goes through a lot of stuff that isn't necessarily applicable to our situation, but it allows the regulatory agencies to view this as, the same as they would as any other airport master plan, so we just kind of have to come up to that, that same level. It is a roadmap, whether you take the road in the future or not, is strictly, you know, the governing body of the City of St. Cloud, we're not obligated in any way by anything that we say in the master plan.
Yeah, again, I'm Mike Hotlow with AVCON, we're the firm that was selected a couple of years ago to do your planning and engineering work for the St. Cloud Seaplane Base. And I was gonna mention, like Terry mentioned, that we did complete the feasibility study last year. It did get approval by FDOT. I was, I was also gonna ask, do I have to give my address? I live in Tampa, but AVCON's primarily out of Orlando, so. But, and subsequently, the seaplane base was approved for entry into the Florida Aviation System Plan, which means that it's now eligible to receive FDOT funding for improvements in the future. You know, that might not be next year, but it might be within a couple of years. As Terry mentioned, FDOT requires that seaplane bases conduct a master plan and a seaplane base layout plan to be able to be eligible for that funding, and we did follow FAA procedures throughout the development of the master plan. And something interesting regarding this seaplane base, it's one of two seaplane bases in the state that is included in the system plan, the other one being Taveras, and there are a total of 60 seaplane bases in the state, so it's a big deal for you guys to get entry into the Florida Aviation System Plan, and, you know, that goes a long way to be able to get future funds from FDOT. So, some of the sites that we looked at, we initially looked at Lakefront Park, but we know that you just finished a master plan that really showed fully building out that Lakefront Park would do facilities. So then we looked at a couple additional sites as well. We looked at the park to the east, Chisholm Park, and again, you recently completed a master plan for that area as well, with, you know, a full, I don't know if it was done under the city or under the county, but the, with a full build-out of that park as well. So we had to look at alternative sites around Lakefront Park, we looked at the Site Three to the west, which is the former water treatment facility, and then we also looked at East Lakefront Park, the parcel that's right there in the corner. I believe I have the, the road names listed here, I think it's Rumel Road and Lake Shore Drive. So, we looked at all four of those sites for potential seaplane base development, and, you know, again, here's the master plan for Lakefront Park. So, because you have this fully developed, we didn't want to change that plan up, we wanted to look at alternate sites, and again, the same with Chisholm Park as well. So looking at some of the different options, we came up with three different areas, one at Lakefront Park, one at the Lakefront Park East Site and Rumel Road, and one at the former water treatment plant to the, to the west. We felt that, you know, the short-term project would be to develop seaplane docks at Lakefront Park, and I think that will allow you to gauge the interest, once you have some facilities out there where seaplanes can park. And then, you know, that would be a short-term project that you should, you know, ideally want to pursue. And then, depending upon the level of interest as you experience additional operations, maybe a medium-term or a long-term development might be the site to the east of Lakefront Park, or the site to the west. Depending upon what the interest is, we know, you know, in Taveras, they have a great number of seaplane operations in development, I'm sure maybe some of you have visited that area. So, and I'll mention, like, the medium-term development right there in Lakefront Park East includes a small apron, you know, an admin building, some fueling facilities and docks, and that would, that area shown on the land side, on the shoreline occupies approximately a half acre for that medium-term development. The long-term development to the west, you know, that's a little bit larger of an apron, a small hangar, some additional fueling facilities, and, you know, depending upon, in a couple of years, after you build the docks, you get people into the area, then further making a decision as to, you know, where to build shoreline facilities in the future. So, looking at some of the costs for the short-term project, we're looking at roughly a $3 million upfront cost. That cost has gone up quite a bit in the past couple of years, just as everything else has. That would include the construction of seaplane docks, you know, possibly purchasing a fuel truck, and also having a lighted wind cone. So, you know, quite a bit of money, but as the thing, as construction and material costs have gone up over the past couple of years, that, that number has significantly increased. And I know, you know, you guys are looking at funding opportunities to potentially pursue this type of development in the near future, and we also know, you know, looking at Taveras and what goes on there at their, at their seaplane facility and attracting additional development in combination with what you're trying to do at Lakefront Park, you know, we think this is a good idea for you to pursue in the short term. And again, the costs just go up for the, the potential medium-term and long-term facilities because you have additional shoreline, apron, and hangar, so those projects are significantly more expensive, but, you know, it's not, not just building docks, it's doing the dredging, building a hangar, building the apron. But again, the footprint of the one to the left, the medium-term one, is approximately half an acre, the one on the right, the long-term, is less than an acre, so it really wouldn't occupy that much space, but, and our, our master plan kind of lays out the three different recommended development options with some potential timeframes and additional cost So, this is the document that must be submitted to FDOT for approval. It's the Seaplane Base Layout Plan, includes a series of technical drawings that, again, we have to submit to FDOT for approval. Ideally, we're gonna get your, you guys to give us the blessing to submit this document in combination with the master plan to FDOT, maybe tomorrow, maybe early next week, so that they can approve it, and we can start programming some potential funds with them for future projects at the airport. So, here's why we're here today. I don't know if it's my job to read the resolution and request your formal adoption.
Yes, we're requesting the approval of the resolution and authorization for the city manager to allow us to transmit the plan to FDOT District Five Aviation Seaport and Spaceport Office for their review and hopeful acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. If you'll stand, stand down in case we need to ask a question. Would anyone of the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, this has been a long time percolating. This was kind of kicking around when I got on council seven years ago, so, to get the master plan, but, I'm gonna be the fly in the ointment. To me, like, when we did the Lakefront Master Plan, we talked about the seaplane, you know, opportunity, right? Because this has been a seven-year conversation, at least for me, I don't know how long it was going on before I got here. And so I know in the master plan, we anticipated that, and it goes back to the slide, you'll see that there was seaplane parking shown in the Lakefront Master Plan, and when I got on council, you know, it was like Taveras, we need to go like Taveras, we need to mimic them, so I went, you know, I loaded up, went one day and spent some time there with their staff and everything, and what struck me about Taveras that's different from us is that when the planes land in Taveras, they're in downtown, right? They land the plane, they get out, and they're in downtown, and I said, gosh, that seems more well-suited to me to like Kissimmee, right? If they landed at the marina and parked at the marina, they're like right there in downtown Kissimmee, they have all the stuff, so then it was like, the transportation between the lakefront and downtown, how are we gonna get there? And so with the previous city manager, you know, we talked about, well, we'll probably have to have golf carts, or we'll have to do something as the planes are coming in, and they'll have to like call a golf cart and get one ready, and they'll have to have staff, we'll have to do all these things. So to me, that's already a challenge, but to move it further away, like, if it's down at the east end or the west end of the lakefront, that makes it even more, like, out of the way, so, that's a challenge for me, yeah. So you can see the Lakefront Master Plan, and you can see on the left-hand side, it's got the seaplane docks shown, shown there. I wish we could touch the screen and point things out, but you guys see it. So, I mean, that's a challenge for me, is like, if you don't put it here centrally located, now when the Lakefront Master Plan got adopted, I remember myself and Councilmember Cooper were saying, we racked and stacked that lakefront, and we're not leaving like any, like, open, I think there's like a hotel, and there's all these other things, but I would prefer to make some modifications if we move forward with the seaplane base, to do something in, in the downtown, just because I think if you move things further out, or even like one of the options with Chisholm, like, where, where are they gonna go if they land and park at Chisholm, you know? All they have at the lakefront is Krabby Bills, which, I mean, that's not gonna really draw repeat customers, I don't think, you know, without a lot of variation, but that, those are my kind of feelings about the master plan, I'll see what everybody else is thinking.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, great point, and I've looked at, and I've known more about seaplanes and airports than I ever have reading the stuff, it's, it's a big, it's a big undergoing.
If, if I could, I think there's a misconception, I think we probably failed, this is three different areas of development, with the first one down by the marina.
Oh, I thought you were not doing that one.
Yeah, and illustrating that other areas could be developed in the future as well.
If we're super successful and need more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your presentation, I thought you were not.
Short-term is at the marina, and then, future option, medium, would be down at Lake Shore and Rumel Road. and Rumel Road, and then long-term would be at the former water treatment plant.
Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
So we're just trying to optimize the areas that are available for seaplane use, if that's desired.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gilbert.
Yeah, again, the, the cost of doing this is so substantial, I wouldn't want to see a, a potential and then a, a forever. I'd like to see it forever, because I may not be around here, but this is going to be something that twenty, thirty years down the line is going to be beneficial to the city. We also got this big old boat that's over there that's coming in here too, so we got to make sure, I don't think that's in any of these plans, but if you guys seen it, it's pretty darn big. So my suggestion would be the water plant or somewhere there, because it's the future. And you talked about hotels. Do we want to do this and put all this infrastructure in, the millions of dollars, and then move it on a temporary basis, or do we just bite the bullet and put it in a permanent location? I'm asking you, because I have no knowledge about that.
Right.
Except for everything I read this today. And I can't even fly a plane, so I'm going to have to ask you for that.
Again, we would not look at doing infrastructure. We would leave that infrastructure in place and use it. And then we would develop, you could develop other areas in addition to what you already have.
So it's not temporary at, at the, at the first location by, by our existing marina? That, that will be a permanent lo- location? But since I started speaking, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I know I had my light on. The Parks and Recreation Director sent me a message that actually the water treatment plant site is on our Lakefront Master Plan as the new public boat ramp. So that's, that's really not an option. So it's, it's, I think, the first, the, the one, the one by the marina, Rumel, and are the actual options?
Well, we've actually talked about some dual use down there with the boat ramp.
Okay.
Councilwoman Urban.
Yeah, great comments by both councilmembers Matheny and Gilbert. I would like it to be centrally located if it's there. I still have some convincing to do on this whole seaplane thing. I think I'm late to the game on the initial planning stages, but with the understanding that this is simply just submitting the master plan to potentially get FDOT funding, I would motion for approval. I just, still not a hundred percent convinced yet on, on this whole thing, so.
I'll second you.
All right.
I have someone who'd like to speak first. Councilwoman Fletcher.
I just want to echo the same comments. I, I would like to see it centrally located in the, the, you know, basically between Massachusetts and, you know, wherever it is on the other side, so that they can take advantage of Florida Avenue once it's done to come to downtown and, and stuff like that. And like, like the other comments have, have said, this is just to, to submit it. I know it is a legislative priority of ours, so that we can, you know, get funds to be able to do this in the future. So with that, I, I think it's great.
And I have the same sentiment. I believe it'll all be located down, down close to the marina.
Councilmember Matheny, your light is still on.
Yeah, I put it back on. I just did want to say, like, from my job perspective, money comes to plans. So it's very important to have this, right? Because then this is a tool to go seek grants, go say it's economic development, go do all these things. It's like, that's our mantra at work, is money comes to plans. Like, so by having this, I feel like that gives us an additional foothold to ask for grant dollars. In my mind, this is like a grant-funded project, not like a taxpayer-funded project. And, and it is a strange thing, the seaplane thing. Like, when I got on council, it was already rocking and rolling, and that's when you learn, any plane can land on any body of water, like, they don't, they don't, you know, it can land anywhere, right? Like, they don't have to have a designated area, they just aren't supposed to land on top of people.
Yeah, jurisdiction would, jurisdiction would have to go to the state to get their body of water prohibited.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so I just wanted to say that money comes to plans, so it's great to have this, because it's a tool now they could give to, you know, grant opportunities.
Go ahead and make your motion.
I'll make a motion for approval on Resolution 2023-193R.
Second.
And we have a motion, Councilmember Urban, and a second, Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, could you read item eight?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-44, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, adopting the recreation and open space elements of the comprehensive plan, providing for filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, suburbility conflict, copies on files and effective date.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Dagmarie Segarra, Deputy Director for the Community Development. This is the final in adoption hearing for the recreation and open space element. The first and transmittal hearing was, you heard this item on, on September fourteen. Since then, the, this item was transmitted to the Department of Commerce, and we received no objections or comments from any local or state agencies. So we didn't make any amendments or changes to what was proposed on the September fourteen. It is part of our effort to update our comprehensive plan, to update all of our elements, since they haven't been updated since, since two thousand and two. And in summary, the, the changes will, are, are compatible with the strategic goals of, of the city. I can go through each slide of, of goals if you wish me to, or we can skip it to the end for the recommendation. It is, it is staff recommendation for this council to approve ordinance 2023-44 for the adoption of the recreation open space element for the comprehensive plan amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not while we have discussion and a motion by council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilwoman Urban. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could you read item number nine, if the record please?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-45, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article Two, definitions, sections two point one point one, amending Article Three, zoning regulations, amending Table Three dash four, Table Three dash five, and Table Three dash nine of the Land Development Code, amending Division Twenty Supplemental District Regulations, Sections Three point twenty point thirty-eight, accessory dwelling units of the Land Development Code, providing for suburbility conflicts and effective date.
Good evening, Council, Dagmarie Segarra, Deputy Director, Community Development. Again, this item, this is for final hearing and adoption of the accessory dwelling units for the City of St. Cloud. This item, the first hearing, was presented to you in September fourteen. Since then, at the time, the council had recommended approval of the first hearing and while requesting staff to work on some points of clarification and adding, and adding the additional criteria. So I'm just going to go over the changes that we have worked through since September fourteen. We added a revision to Table Three dash eleven to include the ADU requirements. We added a permit restriction to subsection B of the ordinance regarding pending co-violations. In other words, if the property already has an existing violation, they have to resolve that matter before they can build into the property. We added that impact fees will not be charged for ADUs smaller than one thousand square feet to subsection I of the ordinance, and units larger than one thousand square feet shall be charged impact fees. A school district reached out to us and requested that their impact fees would not be waived, so we also included language in stipulating that regardless of the size of the ADU, school impact fees will be collected. We added that the ADU will be required to have address number posted in the principal structure visible from the street if the unit is located in the rear yard in response, in response to the fire department's comments. We also added that the ADU shall not be permitted in a non-conforming lot if it meets the current LDC standards. In other words, our Land Development Code has provisions to, additions to a non-conforming structure. In the event that someone wants to build an ADU, the ADU shall meet the requirements of that zoning. We remove architectural standards for manufacturer ADUs, since we are not, they're not applicable, we are not allowing them in that district. The law coverage, we deleted language and amended in a footnote that exclude the ADUs for maximum coverage and calculation. In regards to the garage conversion, we made no revisions, as it currently enforced, the garage conversions would only be allowed if they have no loss of required parking spaces. We revised subsection H in regards to the occupancy standards to clarify the home state exemption requirement, and our attorney made a very legally language in that code to specify. And we added subsection M with the restrictions in regards to the sale of the property, or, or the ability to split the property. The rest of the presentation is the same presentation that we did back in September fourteen, and about the benefit and how this is really, the community's really looking forward. And it reflects all of the changes that we made. I can, I can go through all of those slices, or I can just go to the end. And, and again, we are very excited to recommend approval of this ordinance, and it's a question of this, this council to also approve ordinance 2023-45. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dagmarie. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not while we have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Dagmarie, I'm sorry, you went through the slide. Tell me what you're doing with the maximum lot coverage. There is a maximum lot coverage, including, because my concern was somebody like having the giant garages, the house, the pavement, the pool, and then putting an ADU, you know, I mean, if that, do we have a maximum impervious lot cover?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do. And now, before, we had a footnote that we were excluding the ADUs, so we deleted that.
Gotcha.
And now they're going to be, they will have to follow the law coverage criteria.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I got two other, two other issues. So one, it says in the ordinance, to my understanding, that if they build an ADU, only one parking space is required for the ADU. I personally think it needs to be two. The other thing is about waiving the impact fees. I mean, I spent a lot of time thinking about this and talking to people and, you know, industry folks and stuff, and, you know, I said, "I, I've, I'm of two minds here. One, I get it, like, grandma, we want to build a unit and like have her live in it. However, I just don't feel like that's going to be the norm, or the kids in the house." And, you know, I, I, I just feel like there's going to be an impact to the system. We're already having to charge for the school impact fees, which is over half of our total impact fees. I think it's a tax on the system. You know, you're adding, unless it's just somebody that fell out of their parents' house right into this house, you know, you're, you're adding to the system. And I said, you know, constantly, as a city council member, we have things brought forward to us, it's like, "Well, we should have been asking for extra money all these years, and we have it, and now we have to do this big adjustment, because we've, we haven't done it for all these years." So I feel like if we don't charge impact fees, it's just going to bite us in a few years, where it's like, "We've been subsidizing this." And I just, I just, my personal opinion is, the impact fees need to be charged, full, full boat amount. I did talk to folks at the county, because I was like, "Hey, you guys have been doing, you know, this accessory dwelling unit for all these years, can, tell me lessons learned, right? What, what have you done that you're like, 'Man, I really regret doing this.'" And one of the things they said is, and, and maybe it won't be such an issue in the city, but at the county, they have larger properties, and so people will build an ADU, and then they'll go over to the tax collector and sell off the accessory dwelling unit, and then these folks have bought it, and they never paid impact fees, and then they come into the county and say, "I need a new roof." And the county's like, "Well, you owe us impact fees." And these people are like, "Well, I didn't know." And they're like, "Well, this was built with an accessory dwelling unit process and stuff." So just, you know, I'm kicking it both ways. Like, I want to help, you know, elderly parents having a, a place to go, but I, I just don't know how, with taxpayer dollars, we could subsidize the additional development in the city. So my feeling is, the two parking spaces, we need to charge the impact fees. If we find that no one pulls an accessory dwelling, you know, like, live with it like this for a year or two, and if we find no one pulls an ADU, I mean, maybe we revisit it. I think it's harder to go the other way, like, to not charge it and then to charge it. I think it's kind of harder to, like, change, change the tide. I'm really excited for the hard work that the staff did in getting us this, because I think it's definitely needed. I just, those are my two sticking points for, for where we're at.
Councilwoman Urban.
Yeah, so I, just a counterpoint, I would say, I have a lot of experience with these in the county. It seems like it's been wildly successful in the county. If it's a situation like where they're being split off, I think that's, it's definitely an issue, maybe something we should address in this as well. But especially for the under one thousand square feet units, they're, they're, they're very small, they're, ninety-nine percent of the time, they're out of necessity for elderly parents who, this is their last option, or they have to be in an assisted living facility or nursing home. This keeps families together, it keeps things affordable for them, even without impact fees in the county. And the county doesn't even charge school impact fees, which, if I had my druthers, I would copy and paste the county's ordinance, but the, even building it in the county without impact fees, it's still nearly unaffordable for these, these elderly individuals needing a place to live with their family. And I, listen, if, I would charge double impact fees on single-family residential if I could, because I think new growth needs to pay for, for itself. But these are very unique situations for the most part. Once you get over a thousand square foot, you're looking at whole families living together and going to school and driving on the roads and everything, but the under one thousand square feet accessory dwelling units are, are very unique to help what I feel is a very targeted, I guess, elderly or, or children who haven't left the hu- house yet, things like that. So that, that would just be my counter comment, but I, I'd agree with, with the other conditions.
My question is, is what would the impact fee be, at least the ballpark?
Yeah, that's.
For the lesser size?
That's what, we were trying to find the information. Thank you, couldn't find it. So currently, if we were to charge all of the impact fees for accessory dwelling units, it would be approximately.
Twenty-four thousand, wasn't it?
Well, twenty, yeah, thank you, because I was trying to remember if the twenty-four thousand was just the rest, the school district, but.
Twelve, it's twelve for the school.
So it's about twenty-four thousand dollars per dwelling unit.
Hmm. For the accessory dwelling?
For the sec, yeah, because our, the way our impact fees are structured are by units, not by size. Other municipalities like Orlando or, or the city of Orange County, I mean, or Orange County, they do it by square footage. They have an amount for each square footage, and they, they build from that. But the way that our, ours are in structure, they, they're per units. We contacted the city of Kissimmee. The city of Kissimmee, recently, they, they adopted the ordinance, they used to not charge impact fees, but they recently made an adjustment, and now they're going to be charging impact fees incrementally. They're going to be adjusting for all of their impact fees, and they're going to include the ADUs to them as well. And I, and yeah, we contacted the county, and the county does not charge the impact fees. I believe that when the ordinance was initially adopted, they, they did adopt that we're charging the impact fees, but then the, the lack of people applying, then they, now they don't charge the impact fees.
Counsel, thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
I'm extremely excited for this ordinance, and I've been, I, I can't, I can't wait till, till, you know, folks can go ahead and, and, and build ADUs. But I do, you know, I kind of echoed the same concerns, right? So I think we're going to see a lot of these come up in the grid, and it's the area of the city where, you know, a lot of folks have lived here for a very long time, the property's been homesteaded, they're paying like four hundred dollars in taxes, and it's not enough. The property has been homesteaded, they're paying like $400 in taxes and it's not enough to be able to provide the services to the grid. The other item that, that is of concern is, you know, long-term, like you were saying, you know, in the future, they're probably going to end up being short-term rentals. Long-term, so how do we kind of manage that? I'd like to see it get approved and I do want to figure, you know, make sure that we're able to pay for the impact on the city. So I'm, I'm in the same boat, the yachts. Like, like I felt that we were there and then we're having this conversation, I'm like, oh, man. Like I, I want to get it across the finish line.
Councilwoman Matheny.
Thank you. So I did ask in my briefing what the city of Kissimmee does, but I didn't hear until just now when she said that. So let's learn the lessons from Kissimmee. They realize it's a mistake not to be charging the impact fees, personally, is what I think.
Was, was it a mistake or the other way around?
No, they weren't charging it, but now they're incrementally putting them in place, is what she just said. So like, you know, clearly they realize. The other thing is, you know, you got to think, the county has a billion dollar budget. They have more flexibility to cover the impact fees and, and I guess the county didn't notify the school, I don't know what the process was, about the impact fees. We gave them a copy of our ordinance and then they came back and said, that's great, but you're still charging for the school.
Yeah, grandma might want to go back to school.
She might. So.
Frankly, I'm not sure how they're doing that.
Yeah, so.
I can't see how they, how, how that can be happening.
Yeah, I just personally think we need to have two parking spaces. I said, we've been fighting for seven years, I've been up here to get parking, you know, it's like, there's a lot of vehicles. I mean, even if it's a thousand square feet, there'll be two people living in it and, you know, two college kids or, you know, grandparents or whatever. I just, I think we need two parking spaces and to charge the full boat impact fees. But I think it's great, I'm excited. I think it's going to help everyone, but I just don't think we should subsidize for the impact.
Councilwoman Fletcher.
So the school impact fees were how much? They were like 12,000?
Yeah, it's, I don't know the exact amount, but it's a little bit over 12,000.
Because I don't know if, if the ADUs can have the same impact as a, you know, a, a larger home. So I think we should reduce it. But how do we go about doing that? Like, that's hard to do tonight. Is it something that we could look at the, the, the impact fee schedule ordinance and then bring it back at a later?
Well, I surmise what Kissimmee is doing is they are working, they're modifying their impact fee analysis and their studies to create a category for ADUs. We don't have a category in our impact fees or any of our impact fee ordinances related to ADUs. So what staff is doing is they're, as I recall, we were treating, to do that calculation, we said, okay, this is basically a duplex, two living units on one property. So they calculated that amount by using a duplex, I think, that's how you did it?
Yeah.
And then we, then they assigned essentially a credit amount for the primary residence. And that left it. That's a rational way of doing it. You know, is it, is it the best only a, you know, an expert would be able to, who does this kind of stuff would do it? So that, so the long-term solution would be to do a modification to the, to the impact fee study to add a category associated with ADUs.
Councilwoman Matheny.
Sorry, it's getting late. I keep forgetting, like I had another point in there. But in the agenda packet, it said why they weren't charging for the impact fees was just de minimis. And I said, based on what? Is there a study? Is there documentation? Has anybody analyzed it? Like, there was no proof to say de minimis on there, so just, just want to throw that out.
Councilwoman Urban.
I, I would like to get this across the finish line. Either way, I just was making my case on the other side, but if, if everybody agrees with that, I, I would be interested in looking into what Mr. Manzera said and maybe Kissimmee's approach and maybe we look for a separate category for an ADU in the future. Or maybe reevaluating this in a year or two if, if nobody's building ADUs because they're unaffordable, maybe we can look at it again. But I would motion for approval with whichever conditions, extra conditions you, you want to put.
Two parking spaces and charge the ADU, or charge the impact fees.
With two parking spaces and impact fees.
We have a motion from councilmember Urban with the provisions that have just been added. Do you all have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Councilwoman Matheny, Madam Clerk.
Did you ask for public comment, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Did I overlook that? I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
Public, would anyone in the public like to comment? I believe so. Say your name and address.
Tamara Pell, Osceola County School District, 809 Bilbeck Boulevard. I just wanted to comment that under the ordinance 24-7, the county does pay impact fees on accessory dwelling units.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, read item number 10 real fast.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-50 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter one, general provisions, administration and boards of, and commissions of part three, land development code, adding regulations, stipulating the rules of construction and interpretation, measurements and calculations, as well as providing for suborbidity conflict codification, scribner's error, publication and effective date.
Good evening. I've prepared a two-hour presentation for this item.
And I like your, and I like your new hairdo.
We continue this item.
I will breeze through this because you've already seen it at a workshop. So basically, we hired a consultant to analyze our current land development code and make recommendations on how we can make it more user-friendly, both to the public and city staff. And so what they've done is they've restructured it and did some minor cleanups. This is phase one of two phases. This first phase is only the restructuring and the second phase will be rewriting the land development code as we update the comprehensive plan. Okay, so our consultants looked at other jurisdictions and with staff's input, it agreed that we should follow the Osceola County example because it'll make it easier for our developers and residents to follow the code because it's recognizable, the format is already familiar to them. And so essentially, we've consolidated our existing 14 articles into eight chapters. On the next few slides, it's just the general outline of the chapters, which you've already seen. I'll go through each one very quickly. Basically, for chapter one, we added new two le, two newly proposed sections, the rules of interpretation and rules of measurement. But we'll get more into detail on those two items on the substantive changes ordinance. Okay, chapter two is for the development processes, procedures and permits. This chapter houses the approval processes, procedures and required permits. Chapter three is the performance and citing standards, which includes zoning districts, supplemental regulations and architectural standards. Chapter three, the goal is to just simplify this chapter by adding tables where the development standards are included and for the individual zoning districts and they can be quickly and easily referenced. Chapter four consolidates the site design and development standards. This includes regulations specific to sites and developments such as parking, architectural standards, landscaping, open space, et cetera. Chapter five consolidates the impact and mobility fees into one chapters and the definitions were removed and moved to chapter H, which is now the central location of our definitions. And chapter six and seven remain unchanged, other than their level of classification, which was changed from articles to chapters. Again, chapter eight consolidates the definitions. There were 527 terms and definitions in 11 different locations, so we consolidated them. And looks like I have a slide that's gone missing. Staff and, our staff recommends approval for ordinance number 2023-49 and we are requesting that council also approve ordinance number 2023-49. And we're available for any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion or motion by council. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Urban and a second, councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam Clerk, could you read item number 11 into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-50 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter one, general provisions, administration and boards and commissions of part article, sorry, of part three, land development code, amending regulations, stipulations and rules of construction, interpretation, measurements and calculations, as well as providing for suborbidity conflict codification, scribner's errors, publication and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin again. This ordinance is secondary to the ordinance that I just went over to, went over. And it basically captures the substantive changes that we're making to the land development code. It captures any changes that are proposed to the language that basically goes back to chapter one that includes the two newly proposed sections, the rules of interpretation and the rules of measurement. This is just the structure of the new article five. I won't go through that in detail. And then this is the structure for the new article six. And then for chapter eight, we just removed definitions that needed to go in other sections, specifically for measurement and height. And staff recommends approval of this as well. And we're requesting that council approve ordinance number 2023-50 and we are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have a discussion or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, councilwoman Matheny, sent to councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Madam, could you please read item 12 into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-51 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending chapter four, site design and development standards by adding a new article title, article 10, public art, providing for public art requirements for certain non-residential developments and also includes effect, suborbidity, scribner's error, conflict codification and an effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunklin again. This request is for an amendment to the land development code to expand the public art program. Right now, the only zoning districts that require payment into the art fund is CBD one and CBD two. This amendment will establish regulations citywide for non-residential developments requiring 1% of the cost of construction to be spent on art or placemaking, or they can pay that amount into the city's art fund. Here is the structure of the proposed new article 10. Here are examples of what other jurisdictions have accomplished by requiring art to be integrated into their developments. Staff and planning commission recommended approval and we are requesting that council also approve ordinance number 2023-51 and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll receive public comment. Ms. Joe Thacker? Well, you've been patient today.
Sometimes it's nice to sit there and not get beat up.
Really? I never knew that.
Joe Thacker, 17 South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. What I'd like to ask you tonight is to postpone this for a little bit. The commercial developers would like to have the opportunity to sit down with staff and go through the ordinance. The 1%, if most, a commercial development is probably at least $5 million. That's $50,000 we're adding to their cost. A lot of developments are now at 25 million for commercial sites. That's $250,000 for each project that comes forward. So they want to sit down with staff and say, maybe 1% isn't the right amount. Or maybe there should be a cap at some point if you're over a certain amount. And so, and there's a couple of other things about process that we'd like to sit down and talk about. So we're not saying, don't go forward with this. Of course, we want the city of St. Cloud to, to be beautiful and recognizable, is a wonderful place to be. So what we'd like though is just the, a little more time to have some very concentrated conversations and come back to you with a ordinance that everybody can, can be happy to support.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, thank you for that. We'll have council discussion and/or motion at this point. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I wanted to give a shout out to the Honorable Dave Askew because this was his thing. When I first got on council, so seven years ago, he brought this up and we all supported it, thought it was a great idea. The way the ordinance was written, it was so restrictive. I think zero dollars have come into it. You know, it was only in these certain districts, it was only on a full moon, on a Tuesday and a month that ends in R and, you know, it just, we just never got any money. So thank you to staff for finally getting it back to us. I'd been pushing for it and trying to get this across. I thought it was a great idea. I don't want to delay it. It's first reading, so I think you have time to work with staff prior to coming back. I think having those conversations is reasonable, but I don't think, since it's first reading, I don't want to delay it personally. Just, I guess I'll throw it to my other council members to see. I, I feel like you could work out the details before it comes back for the final reading.
Councilwoman Fletcher.
I wanted to say the same thing, you beat me to the punch, is that, that councilmember Askew, that, you know, this was his vision and I think that this is great. This is going to be something that's going to live beyond us. And it's going to be, I think, spectacular. This is going to be amazing, citywide, not just in the CBD one and CBD two zoning districts. I do want to move it forward too, but I would like to work with the commercial developers. So if they can reach out, I'd love to, to sit down, maybe have a meeting with staff and kind of see what, what we can do before the second meeting, if that's, if that's something that will be okay with you.
Sure. And Dave was here for a while. He, he said his PTSD was kicking in and so he had. But he did call me before the meeting and we did say to sit down and talk because, you know, there were things about, well, will staff be the ones that approve the art and will it take longer to get your, a project approved because of this? And, you know, those kinds of things. And he said he would sit down too. So I would welcome all those great minds to make this get to the point where it will work.
I think that would be great. I think it will be a success for both the, the commercial developers and the product that they offer in the city as well as, you know, for the residents. So I think that's great.
Councilwoman Gilbert.
You know, we look at 1% and we say, ah, it's 1%. And I've negotiated contracts around the United States around the world and we had a nickel that we gave to the UAW for each of a hour that the UAW people worked and it turned into a $5 billion cost. Half of it went in the pockets of the senior management of the UAW, but that's another story. 1% as a developer is a big percent. You know, 6%, 7%, 8% profit is huge. So 1%, although I think it's a phenomenal idea, I really don't want to discourage any more developers for coming in here because of another burden that they have placed upon them. And I know it sounds, it's just 1%. And I know it sounds, it's just one percent, but one percent could be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, two-point-five million dollars, and, and, and when we get these in, industry here which we want, it might discourage them. I mean, one percent, if you look at margins, is a big percentage in the corporate world. So although I think it's a phenomenal idea, I'd like to table it also, but I don't want to table it to next meeting, because our staff works so hard and they do such a great job, and every time we say, okay, do it to next meeting, and then they're jumping through hoops, and then they're running around trying to get our flavor of the month up to the next council. Great idea, but let's, let's let minds be minds, let's let developers meet with staff, and let's do this the proper way. Not saying I don't want it, but let's make a reasonable amount with caps and things such as that. That's the only comment I have as a, a, a general contractor in different fields. Thank you very much for listening, Mayor, I'll give it to you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilwoman Gilbert. Actually, that's why I turned my light on. The next meeting, we have Thanksgiving holiday, which will be a challenge for staff to be able to get comments and make revisions and have it ready on the next agenda.
I don't think anybody said next meeting.
No, right, so I just, I just wanted to say, if, if we could just plan on it being maybe in January, that we would bring it back, and it's not an advertisement that we have to, do we have to pick a date?
Well, what you're doing today is you're putting first reading, so tech, typically, when we approve first reading, the final adoption is at the next meeting, so if the council wants to move forward, we'd ask, we approve introduction or first reading, with final adoption to be at the January fourteenth meeting?
I don't know, I just wanted to say, January, there's two meetings.[713.12][713.12](laughing). Melissa, what, what, what do you think, January four, the second meeting in January? Give us, give us time to, to really, just depending on what the comments are, if we can bring it back earlier.
Do we have to give it a date certain?
Well, yes, we need to, we need to, we need a date.
You've got to have a date.
For final, yes, you could, we, we could do January fourteenth, and if we, if we had to, we can continue it at the fourteenth meeting, if you want to do it that way.
January eleventh.
I mean, I was just, I know Councilwoman Matheny mentioned she didn't want to delay it too long, she wants to, wants to get it moving, that's why.
I make a motion to approve. Oh, sorry?
Let me say something, okay?
And it's the eleventh.
You've got to hurry up![755.12][755.12](laughing). It's the eleventh.
Kudos, again, to Dave Askew, I think that's a great idea, but I do agree that, you know, we need to make sure that we've heard from commercial businesses that we're trying to, desperately to attract to our city, and that we give them the opportunity to offer significant input and work with our staff, and come back with whatever amendments or changes or proposals that they have, having worked with our staff, because I, I agree with Mr. Gilbert, I think he's hit the nail on the head. You know, one percent doesn't sound like a lot, but it can be a big number when you have a really big project. And I certainly, I love the idea of art and the impact, I believe in the arts, at least some of it, anyway, who the artist is. But anyway, if we could have that amendment that, or, or that understanding, that if we pass this first hearing, that, and no, I guess we can continue it, we got the bill to do whatever we want to.
Yeah, we just provide some direction of what to do.
Enough time, you know, pulling good quality commercial, people who can offer wise input and come back with a balanced perspective. I don't, I just don't want it rushed, but it's been thought through well. Okay? So I would...
You want to make a motion, I'll make a second.
So I'll make a motion to approve the first reading, and we all have said we don't mind working with, with them, you know, working with staff, getting the comments, you know. I'd say bring it back to the second meeting in January.
So that is the twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth, with, after they have had time to work with the community and revise the language accordingly.
As long as we have, as I said, we can continue it. I will second it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you very much, and I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Glad you didn't get beat up too bad on that one.
Thanks for sticking around.
She can't leave now, I mean, you're almost at the finish.[895.62][895.62](laughing). You might as well say, yeah.
Item number thirteen has been pulled, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Item number fourteen, could you please read that into the record?
Public Hearing for Resolution Number Twenty-two-three dash two-oh-seven-R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, declaring a one-point-five-fifty-four-plus-minus acres of certain vacant real property located west of Budenjer Avenue and south of Peghornway, owned by the City of Saint Cloud, as surplus property for leasing and approving the lease of said property to Air Methods Corporation for the construction, maintenance, and operation of a heliport for medical transport plus payment to the city of six hundred per month for an initial term of five years, authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement and providing an effective date.
We have a recommendation for continuing that item to Ju, January the eleventh. I still move, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Urban and Matheny.
Give it to Urban.
We've got two seconds, second and third.
Thanks, please.
Give it to Urban.
So, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny. Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
The next item, margin is council action. Item number one, could you please read that into the record?
Resolution Number Twenty-two-three dash two-twenty-four-R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a task authorization to the agreement for construction manager at risk services for projects less than four million in value with Quinn Commercial, Inc., for the Ranch at Saint Cloud Life Safety Phase Two, establishing a guaranteed maximum price, authorizing the city manager to approve change orders without increasing the approved budget and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Stephanie Holcamp Parks and Recreation Director. This item before you is the Phase Two of the Ranch Life Safety Project. The first phase, oh, I'm sorry, the first phase of the project was completed back in September. The, this life safety proj, project actually encompasses stuff that was recommended and part of our code to upgrade fire sprinkler system firewall, ADA requirements, so all these are necessary to keep the facility open and having gatherings. So Phase One, we added a firewall in the garage area, we upgraded the ramp into the actual facility to meet ADA requirements, we had to move the barn door to accommodate that, we added new stairs for emergency egress and leveled the concrete flooring for safety reasons, and of course, the fire alarm system per the fire marshal. The Phase Two request, we're connecting this facility to water and sewer, it's good to note there are at least three septic tanks that have to be removed that's on, that are on property. We're also upsizing the sewer line to accommodate the new public restroom facilities that will be in the final ranch master plan. Then we have to install a FDC connection that's required for the fire sprinkler system for the main facility, and then some other additional building and site upgrades, installing a new gate system off Jones Road to make the entry wider and to meet code easier, that's part of, also meets the fire department's requirements, so when they pull off a Jones Road, they can get in there safely, and they'll have a turnaround down at the end. The painting of the building, it needs to be done, and then we also have to add a paved handicap parking spot, which we do not have at the facility at this time. And then on, I'm, go back here, the large concrete area out back, so it would be to the south of the main facility that, for everybody that's been out there, you can, it's a trip hazard in a lot of places, so we're going to tear that up and just put sod down for ease of maintenance as well, and there'll be a sidewalk to the venue all the way out back. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Twenty-two-three dash twenty-two-R of the Ranch Life Safety Project Phase Two. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If there's no public comment, we'll have discussion or motion by council. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Stephanie, you maybe told me this before, and forgive me if I forgot, but I, I know when I was out there at the last event, probably six-plus months ago, the sulfur water is so strong and smelly in, when you use the bathroom facilities, and I had said, can we upgrade it and connect it to Potable, because it's really not great? Did that happen?
That's what this does.
Okay, because it wasn't listed in there, so we're, so we're connecting to Potable into the bathrooms?
Yeah, the whole facility would be connected to water.
It's late, I can't read.
That's okay.
So, yeah, I just want to say that, because it's like, the facility is beautiful, and the bathrooms are wonderful, but you just about pass out when you walk into the bathroom.[1245.83][1245.83](laughing). So great, I'm glad you're taking care of that.
That was one of my great discoveries when I came to Florida.
To Florida, yeah.
And then all these Floridians were telling me, oh, I love it, it just really adds great flavor to my...
Oh, no.[1260.33][1260.33](laughing).
It's about how do you, how do you get it past your nose? My, my problem. Would anyone in the audience like to, I've already done that.
Yes, sir.
Getting confused here.
It's late.
Any other discussion from council? I have a motion that we pass Resolution Number Twenty-two-three two, twenty-four-R, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
And thank God, we're down to the city attorney now. What you got for us?
I like the sound.
He doesn't usually say that.
I, I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City Manager Miller.
I have pages of things I want to tell you, but I'll try to go quickly. First, I want to let the council know that the city clerk's office has now got us all caught up on our meeting minutes.
Yay!
As you know, when Mrs. Loro took over the role of city clerk a year ago, we were eighteen months behind on getting the meeting minutes completed, through her leadership and focus on getting us caught up. She and her staff have accomplished this task and will keep us current moving forward. So thank you to Ivy, Claudia, and their team.[1337.58][1337.58](applause). Additionally, I wanted to let you know South Florida Water Management District had their board meeting at the county this week. I, with Councilwoman Matheny, attended the boat tour of East Lake Toho, which they were showing us the results of the dredging that they did a couple of years ago, and it was, it was really exciting to go out there with kind of the environmentalists to point out the health of the lake and, and explain the differences between us and Lake, and regular Lake Toho. Also this week, Osceola Legislation, Legislation delegation happened, where the mayor did present our items, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, the priorities that you approved that we presented were the South US 192 Drainage Improvements, and also the Seaplane Base Phase Two, so hopefully we'll get those this year. That was a very busy day. At the end of the day, I attended the Hispanic Chamber of Metro Orlando Economic Summit with Abismaella Brew, our Strategic Initiatives Administrator, and Antranet Forbes, our Economic Development Director. Antranet's doing a great job strengthening our relationship with the Hispanic Chamber of Metro Orlando. On November sixteenth, they are going to hold Ola in the city, here in downtown Saint Cloud in front of City Hall, from five to eight PM, that's a Thursday, so that's the same event that we just received an award for. So we're really excited that they're coming back and, and they're making it a regular award, and they were advertising it at the economic summit when they released their brand-new brand, which was the most exciting thing I've ever experienced.[1445.83][1445.83](laughing) It was, it was, it was great. Also, just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the wins our communications team has been doing with the, the reach. I know you've all made it very clear that you wanted to make sure we were expanding our reach and getting more information out there. So on Facebook alone, are, we've had a fifty-two-point-five percent increase on our Facebook reach this year, we have just shy of twenty thousand active page followers, and then similarly, our Instagram reach is up sixty-eight percent. So, um, there's some, uh, our page views on LinkedIn have tripled this year, so I wanted to share, that was very big, and, and that was something that you asked for in January. Last, happy Thanksgiving. That's it?
Q. Councilmember Fletcher.
Yes, I have two items. One is the, the Lantern Festival is this weekend, it's a, it's a private event down at the, the lakefront, they, the organize, or, excuse me, the organizers did come last year, and it was one of the most amazing events that I've ever seen held in the city of Saint Cloud. I will, I'll send a video over to the city manager, maybe she can send it out to everyone so you can have an idea of what really, you know, happens during the event. It really showcases our city and our lakefront area very, very, very well. And then the final thing, a lot of people in the community know that there was an incident at one of my family's businesses, and I, I tell you, you really don't know how awesome of a community we have. I tell you, I, we, I had over a hundred phone calls, and the chief of police, the fire chief, the city manager, building official, everybody did an outstanding job of assisting my family and, and them, and if there's anybody out there that has any issues or knows, knows of a friend or somebody who's having a hard time, the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, you can text or call, is nine-eight-eight, and it's available twenty-four-seven for those in need. And with that, you know, have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Councilmember Gilbert.
I'll keep it short, Mayor.[1588.47][1588.47](laughing). Today is one year and, and one day till I was sworn into this position. I've learned a lot, I have to thank the staff, they've done an awesome job, you talking about our requests are so hard on them, and yet they continue to produce. I've had staff, and I've never been more excited about the staff that the city has and, and being a part of that team. It's awesome, it's been one year, so I had learned a lot. With that being said, I've learned a lot from this council here, and I know we became friends, and some of us, we just can't talk, you know? So I'd like this to be my Phase Five, but I can't even put you guys in there, because we can't have that kind of relationship, but, but, but what you've done to me to make me a better person, I certainly appreciate, and your knowledge and wisdom and your care for the city is awesome. But the most important is the citizens of Saint Cloud that have given me the opportunity to represent them, and I know I've made mistakes, and I know I've done some things, but I will not stop working for these citizens, because if you go to Saint Cloud, it's cool, but it's no secret anymore. We are a great place to live, and it's so wonderful to have, to met the people I would never have unless I'm sitting on the seat. So praise the Lord, praise the people of Saint Cloud, and thank you very much for one year, I'm no longer a rookie.[1669.15][1669.15](laughing).
Councilmember Urban.
If that's short for councilmember Gilbert, I'd hate to see a long spinoff.[1679.01][1679.01](laughing). (laughing). I'm just messing.[1682.01][1682.01](laughing). We are the soldier city, and it's Veterans Day weekend, so I just want to thank all of the veterans who have served our country so that we can live for free here in this beautiful city and this beautiful country, and happy Thanksgiving to all, so thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
I'm so sorry, guys, I have a few items, but I'll be fast. First and most important, it's my sister's birthday today, so I want to say, happy birthday, Laura, I'm sure she's not watching, but, you know, maybe she'll catch it online.[1718.01][1718.01](laughing). You guys covered Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, I wanted to, a slide got put up, if we could put it up now. So I met with a constituent, gosh, maybe like two months ago, and we met out here on Budenjer Avenue, south of the school, and he pointed out an opportunity for us, which I thought was a great idea. I took it to our city manager, and I said, hey, could you have staff evaluate it and see if they think it's a good idea, seems like a good idea to me? So it came back with actually a recommendation from staff, so I'm presenting it to you guys to see if there's consensus to, to move forward. So what happens right now is, south of the school, you can see where the current sidewalk ends, over in that vicinity, there's a crosswalk, and it's not within the school zone, it's like outside the school zone, and there is a crossing guard there. But what he pointed out to me, which I thought was a great idea, if you go ahead and build the sidewalk, this missing piece of sidewalk on the west side of the road, you see it shown in red, and then you can put the crosswalk up by the school, and there's already a crossing guard there. So it would, you know, I mean, not to say we could get rid of crossing guard, but maybe they can move somewhere else, or, you know, have some coverage somewhere else, but with the construction of the sidewalk, then it makes more sense also to have the children crossing within the school zone, you know, so, because people are more aware. crossing within the school zone, you know, so, because people are more aware. They did give an estimate of the construction, which was a little less than thirty thousand dollars to construct this piece of sidewalk, the city manager has told me that she can find the funds if we give consensus to move forward with this project. I'm a yes.
I, I think that was two and a half.
Any objections?
No, I'm, I actually live right there.
Would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I live right there, and I think this is a remarkable-
It was a great idea, I thought.
It's a great idea, so thank you to the, the citizen who lives in that area, and that's what the sidewalk fund's for, right? Like, where they pay into the sidewalk fund, so this is amazing.
No objections.
Okay. I want to ask the city manager, I feel like we're dragging out this brick paver resolution, you know, I, I want to have some kind of like, within a very short period of time, like a plan, like we're going after their performance and payment bond, like what are we doing? Like, let's, I, I feel like we're just stuck in like analysis paralysis, we don't know what to do, no one's doing anything, and, and I feel like the longer we wait, the harder this is going to be to like rein it back in, so I guess I'll look to the city manager, like, is there, I mean, can we get like some, here's our plan, here's our, what we're doing?
I've been waiting for their updated plan, and I haven't received it.
But let, I'm tired of waiting.
Yeah.
I'm tired of waiting, so let's light a match and say, we're pulling your performance and payment bond, we're doing, you know, like, let's do something, I mean, I don't know how the other council members feel.
Well, we can, with that direction, we'll, we'll escalate the situation a little bit further and make sure, we'll send the necessary demands.
Does everybody like?
Um, so, for me, this is extremely frustrating, so I asked, obviously during my briefing, you guys reached out, they haven't responded back. At this point, I want to enforce the contract to its maximum-
Fullest extent.
-fullest extent possible, and never do business with them ever again in the city of St. Cloud.
Yep.
Ever, don't ever come back here, because it is extremely terrible job. We had the opportunity to go to the, the conference for the CRA, and I got to sit through ten minutes of beautiful brick pavers-
Yeah.
-and showcased on how wonderful this is, and our, it's, it's a mess. It is a mess, they won't, they haven't responded, I haven't got an update from them, I want it done. Like, it's, we're left with a major mess.
Yeah.
And I agree with you.
Yeah, I feel like we're pushing a rope here, like, let's put, put down some pressure, so, we good?
We have direction.
Okay. My last item, I swear, my last item.
Again?
No, so we had a workshop, and we talked about various opportunities for park purchases, and we prioritized, you know, the projects, and the property that I wanted got ranked number two. It was the lawless property, and so I had told the, the agent, and I said, well, I guess we're not moving forward with this because, you know, it was ranked number two, we all talked about it, got ranked number two. But the city then said, no, 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 we're still, we're still going to try to talk to them, and so it's another one where I feel like, we got to make a decision, you know, the, this has been going on for months, you know, they want to do business with the city because the city is a faster closer, the people who own the property are in their eighties, like they want to, you know, not get tied up in the like development thing that they're not going to close until they get all entitlements and all that other stuff. I know we are having a challenge with funding, and the city has reached out to PFM, I think it is, to look at funding opportunities, but I guess I just wanted to ask the council, are we interested or not? I think it's a great purchase, I, I just feel like we got, we got to make a decision, like, we're, we're doing it or we're not doing it because the, we've kind of strung it out long enough, so.
Yeah, I think that's a beautiful piece of property, and I, I would hate for it to be developed into-
To apartments.
-to apartments or something, and, and I would like to pursue that if we can.
So, so move it up to number one, because I think we have, do we have enough in park impact fees? Yes, please come forward, Mr. Tomac. Dave, you got off easy.
I thought you didn't have it do anything, I do.
Hi, I'm Dave Tomac, with the city manager's office, I guess. So, we've taken all of our capital list items, the items that we would need to finance, we've given the list to PFM, and they're going to come back to us and tell us what our capacities are and strategies for doing that.
Perfect.
So, the lawless property's still on the list, we also have other uses we were looking at for it, other funding sources, so we're still working on it. I talk to their agent periodically, they know we're doing this, they also know they're welcome to get a contract, but as, as long as you think it's taking, it takes about ten times longer to work with a developer with all their due diligence on their contracts and stuff. I think they're willing to wait as long as we're sincerely looking at ways to make it happen.
Well, from my conversations, they don't have that optimistic view of the city, they feel like it's, they're kind of not getting a lot of information, and, you know, they're getting all this pressure from developers, like, to put in our contract, put in our contract, and everybody knows, right, if you sign with a developer, it's going to be a long, protracted process, but I guess they just-
And that's their option.
-are not sure of our interest because of just voids of communication, is the, what the reporting I get back, so.
And, and just so, so the council knows, the capital projects that we asked them, we sat down, we, we made a listing of all the potential things that we think we need to have debt for, because we know the city has an ultimate debt capacity. So we added the police station, we added two fire stations, and these two parks, if I remember correctly.
Right, the two park land purchases.
Mm-hmm, and then, so we, we, we ranked, we ranked them with public safety coming first, and then, then we did the Fertig property, and then the lawless property after that, since it was priority one and priority two.
So, question, and this might not be something we could do, right, but can you, since we get so much of parks' fees from the county, could we take a loan from the county and then just like say, hey, whatever the differential is that we need, right, and then say, hey, county, could you front us this money, and then as the impact fees come in, then, then deduct it from what you owe us, right, until it's like paid back? I mean, is there a way to be creative with the, no?
Oh, I, we'll be as, we'll be as creative as we need to be. Alls we're saying is, alls we're saying is, is that we're doing our best to get the right answers so that we can come to you all with the good recommendations.
Thank you.
And it's not going to happen overnight, I'm sorry, but that's because we're, we're getting into the part where we got to finance.
So I guess to my fellow council members, I hear Colby is interested in moving it to number one, is there anybody else interested in moving it to number one?
I'm not favored moving it to number one.
We got three.
It's all you need, it's all you need, you're done.
So you're going to move the lawless property in front of the Fertig property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll just flip it when we-
We, we still don't, I don't think we still have the funding-
That's right, we still have the finance.
-for it, but-
Yeah, you still got to finance it.
But it'll show them that you have commitment.
Right. And do you have an estimated timeline of when PFM is supposed to get back to you?
Yeah, it's not that long, they said before the end of the year they would have, have something, it, it only takes like a couple of weeks, but we, we've got to get our paperwork to them and everything, so, and it is the holidays, so, that's the only, you know, it's, the holidays, but I, I dare say the development community's not moving that fast either, so I, you know, never mind.
Okay, well, that's the end of my list, thank you very much.
All right. I too want to thank all those who serve, who have served our country as veterans, I went to the Veterans Breakfast, it's a city sponsor, I think most people have no real concept of how many veterans work for our city, that work for the police department, that are our staff, and I just want to say thanks to all of those who have faithfully served as veterans. I just want to say another thank you to not only the police department, but also our city staff who helped with this terrible incident that happened at the gun store, terrible thing to happen, but you guys and your officers did an amazing job, and you're to be commended in the city staff. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for mobilizing them, because you guys just went above and beyond, thank you so much. I also want to say a big thanks to Mr. Albert Leica and Matteo, they're, they're moving forward with the St. Cloud Hotel, and I am so glad to see that happening, and had the opportunity to have lunch with him one day, and I just, it's good to see that progress moving forward, faster the better. With that, I hope you guys all have a wonderful, blessed Thanksgiving. That brings us to our information and reports section. Friday, November the tenth, there'll be city offices where we close the observance of Veterans Day, Saturday, November the eighth, Community Thanksgiving Luncheon will take place at noon at the community center. Thursday and Friday, November twenty-third, twenty-fourth, city offices where we close the observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Friday, December the first, there'll be a tree lighting celebration at six PM out front of City Hall. Saturday, December the second, there'll be a Christmas parade at ten AM going into downtown St. Cloud. Saturday and Sunday, December the second and the third, St. Cloud Holiday Festival, downtown St. Cloud. Friday, December the eighth, there'll be an employee holiday luncheon, city offices will be closed from noon till two PM. Thursday, December the fourteenth, city council meeting will take place at six thirty PM here in City Hall, Council Chambers. We, I issued a proclamation and recognition of Veterans Small Business Week, warrant list number ones available for your review. Recreation Advisory Committee Minutes for July twenty-third have been approved or available for your review, and Recreation Advisory Committee Minutes for August have also been made available and approved for your review. With that, we will be adjourned.